Call our City Commission meeting to order, May 5, 2008. Call roll please.
Stevens?
Here.
Shran?
Hi.
O'Neil?
Here.
Here.
Collier?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Here.
We have our invocation tonight by our good friend Reverend Larry Sparks from New Beginnings Church. All who wish to, please rise.
Let's bow our heads and hearts as we go the Lord in prayer. Father, we're thankful for your presence in this room. We are thankful especially for the freedoms we have. We know that this is a season where in Oklahoma, we're always concerned about the weather, the threat of weather, and we're praying even now for safety. We ask, Father, that you would bless this agenda that is before us tonight, that every need will be met, needs that are financial, needs that require discernment and wisdom, and that you would work through each one of the City Commissioners, the Mayor and the Vice Mayor, the City Manager, the Chief Police, the Fire Chief, each one who has a part of leadership in Shawnee. We're thankful and grateful for each one and for the work that they do. And week after next is Police Week, and we pray for the Chief and all those who work in the Shawnee Police Department, that you will bless them with safety and provision for everything they need to do their job. Lord, we love you, and we know that there is nothing that you withhold from us as we ask in faith. And we pray this prayer believing, not doubting, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, who died to sponsor every prayer. Amen.
Please join me in the flag salute. Attention, positions, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. Appreciate that. Okay, number one, commission and appointment of a Vice Mayor per Article 3, Section 6 of the City Charter.
May I have the floor, please?
Okay.
There's evidently been a lot of discussion on this topic, I would say today, but maybe it's gone on before that. And in an effort to handle this properly through Robert's rules, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion and have discussion after that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to consider Commissioner Pam Stevens for Vice Mayor.
Okay, have a motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holt. Discussion?
First, let me say that I would like to thank the Commissioners here for the support they've given me for the last four years as Vice Mayor, and to the Commissioners that served before the ones that are here. Four years ago, we kind of made an agreement that this would not be a position that someone would have for a long time. And with that said, I think that it's time that someone else take this position. I have spoken with Commissioner Stevens on it, but when I asked her, it was mainly, I think, an attempt to have some continuity. We know that this is an election year, and it's possible that we have a lot of changeover that could be coming up, and there's just a few of us that will be here for the next cycle. And we have had some opportunities, I think, when the Mayor hasn't been available, or you've been at an event, I've been at an event, and Commissioner Stevens has, you know, done the greeting or done the introductions or something, and I've had good feedback from that, too. So I think that's a good sign, too. I know that Commissioner Shran is interested in being Vice Mayor and has spoken to probably some Commissioners about it also. And mainly for the continuity thing, I mean, it's good that someone else is willing to step up, but I would have to make my motion for Commissioner Stevens.
Well, I appreciate Linda what you've done. She has been extremely active. I attend a lot of things. Linda's at a lot of those as well. Sometimes we split those up, but we're at a lot of functions on state level and on a local level here with the citizens. And Pam has stepped up with the Tecumseh Water Discussions and some other areas and volunteered. And that's what it takes is, this is not really, people think this is kind of an honorary title, and there's really a little bit more to it than that. And actually, all the Commissioners should be active in participating with events going on in this community and make themselves available. And again, I, right now, want to thank Linda very much for the amount of time and effort you've spent in handling things when I couldn't be there and being a support person when I was as well. And so I expect you to continue to be an active participant even as a Commissioner, as you are most of the time. I mean, there are a lot of times we went to things and it, obviously, they didn't say Vice Mayor, they said Commissioner, so there's nothing wrong with that. But anyway, I think as well Pam would be, she's proven already that she wants to step up and do the right things. So, other discussion? Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Stevens?
I will accept the responsibilities of the position.
Shran?
You say you will? Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Pam. Appreciate you stepping up once again. Okay, let's consider the approval of Agenda. I think we have a couple of changes requested.
Yes, I'd like to request a change.
Okay.
Okay, it's the opening of the bids. The old number 17, so I guess it's the new number 18. I'd like to make a motion to move that up to, I don't know, we need to open them, maybe after the public hearings, maybe after number 11. Because I think there are some topics in there, things like Airport Road, that I'd like to discuss before we get to the end of the meeting.
Okay, so between 11 and 12?
Sure.
Number 18, okay.
Consider bids, and we'll just do them all since he'll be up here doing them.
Okay.
Put it between 11 and 12.
Okay, is there anything else? Motion to approve the Agenda with that change?
Some of it.
Motion by Commissioner Holt?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collier. Call roll, please.
Holt?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, number three, consider approval of consent Agenda. Anything to be pulled?
I need to pull one.
Okay.
I'd like to pull 3B minutes from the November, or from the April 21st meeting.
3B, okay.
Also, I'd like to pull S3, and it's where we deferred Lot 1 Magnino A-Track, 1700 Magnino Road. I have some questions about that as well.
I'd like to pull P.
P.
And on S, pull Lot 14 Magnino A-Track.
So that'd be one, kind of, S1?
Yeah, S1.
Okay.
Just for a question.
Okay.
Need pull?
I was always going to do, yes, fully deferred Lot 1 Magnino Track, so.
Okay, so she got, she's covered here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, she wants that deferred. I got it. On S, Lakeside Lease Transfers.
Yeah. We've already put that.
You ready to get Lot 14?
Right.
Magnino Track?
Right.
Yeah.
There's two of them, you know. It's Lot 14, not Lot 1.
Well, we pulled 14 and 1 right now, it looks like, right?
That's correct.
So Eccles, we're going to leave Eccle alone?
Yeah.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
Motion to approve the balance?
Some move.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson? I have a hard time saying that now. Second by Commissioner O'Neil. Bear with me.
Yeah.
Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, let's just go right down the list. 3B minutes?
It's just, I'm sure it's just a error, but it's something that I need to have corrected.
Okay. Shoot.
Just a minute. I changed over here. Hope you go on to the next one while I get this down.
Okay, moving right along. How about 3P?
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
Because this does deal with monthly billing, and I just want you to know who is going to be responsible for billing the City of Tecumseh on a monthly basis for the services that we provide out at the animal shelter?
It'll go through NEVA's shop.
And that is in place so that, starting the 1st of July, or actually, like, the 1st of August, that that is actually going to happen on a monthly basis so that we don't have any other problems in the future with billing backing up?
That's really a good question. I think our systems are in place under the quarterback of the police chief and the financial. I'm sorry, what was your question?
Who is responsible for the billing to the City of Tecumseh on a monthly basis for the payment of the services we provide out of the animal shelter? And they explained that it would be through NEVA.
From information provided from the animal shelter.
I guess my concern is I don't want us to get into the situation where we don't bill on a monthly basis, and then, of course, we always have money that's owed to us for services we provide.
That's a good point.
And we've had some issues with this in the past.
You're right. Since I've been here, as far as I know, there hasn't been a problem, and we've been operating without an agreement with Tecumseh. Oh, I believe it's...
About three years.
Since about 2004.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2003, 2004, so I don't think there's any problems.
Okay, so we're going to, who within your department is going to be responsible for sending those numbers up and just making sure that this happens like it's supposed to?
This'll be the Administrator of the Support Services Division.
Okay, perfect.
He's over the Animal Control Section.
Perfect, thank you.
That's Chris. Chris?
Lisa Moody and my department. Between Lisa Moody and him, we'll get it done by myself.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Okay, so are you satisfied?
Yes, absolutely.
Would you like to make a motion to accept 3P?
Motion to accept 3P?
Motion by Vice Mayor Stevens?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collier. Call roll, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
O'Neil?
O'Neil.
Neil?
Motion carries, thank you. Carl, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Go back to 3B.
On Agenda Item Number 6, when we had Mr. Tom Smith up here visiting with us, he wrote down, or I've got it here, that these bricks that were going to be sold for $100 to $150 each, but I asked him at a meeting, two meetings ago, about the price, and the price was going to be $50 per brick. So the question I have here, is it going to be a $50 brick and a $100 to $150 other brick?
Apparently, there's two.
Just clarification.
It's my understanding there's two bricks.
A standard and a larger.
There's a smaller brick that, I don't know how much it is, and then there's a larger one that's like $100 or $150.
Right.
Do you know, Tom?
That's more corporate. The larger's corporate, or...
Well, or just, yeah, just somebody that wants to save money.
Or has three or four lines on it.
Right. The other has two lines, 16 characters each. Okay.
But did he not say that there was a $50 brick?
I think he did.
I think there is, but I just didn't remember until he said.
Maybe they got an estimate of the price of what the park was going to cost, and it went up. When it became a million dollars, when it became a million dollars, it doubled the price of the brick.
Well, anyway, that was my question, and I think we got it straightened out. And the other thing in there...
You still don't know the answer, though, right?
We're getting, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Joe Freeman spoke with us at this meeting, and it's got in here a former veteran. Now, this is just technical.
Really?
He's a veteran.
Yeah.
And he's always going to be a veteran.
Yeah, how can you be a former veteran?
Well, I don't know, but that's what I'm reading in here, and I just wanted that clarified as well.
Okay.
And I'm on the other, I'm okay with this, so I make a move, a motion that we approve 2B.
3B.
3B.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Holt?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Stevens. Call roll, please.
Holt?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, S, let's say S1, Lot 14.
Before we discuss that, I've been requested to defer it to the May 19 meeting because the parties involved don't have their financing ready yet.
Okay.
This is the Lot 14?
No, this, yeah, Lot 14.
Yeah, Lot 14.
Okay, thank you.
That's great.
I'm Chief Building Official for the City of Shawnee. The reports both on Lot 14 Magnino A-Track and Lot 1 Magnino A-Track were disapproved by our office because there was discrepancies on those lots. Let's do Lot 1 Magnino, the one that was deferred from April 7. We just issued the permit this morning, and the demolition crew was out there, took the house down. That was the lot that had the small cabin on it that didn't have a pro septic system that had the water hooked up to it. The person that was wanting to purchase the improvements on that lease from the person who has the lease at this particular time didn't want, he wants to build a new home.
Right.
So rather than putting the septic system down where that cabin was, he wanted to relocate it on the lot. And, but they did get the small cabin removed today. They've broken that door in there and actually take that, the lot's all clear. It's in real good shape. And we did bring in one picture, but it was late, 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 and we got that in. I'm sure they've got all the old picture of that. Commissioner Holt's got that picture of that lot now.
That's clear.
They did a very nice job on it. And of course, Lot 14 Magnino A-Track, that particular lot had two problems on it. One was it had a hole in the privy on it, which needs to be removed, but it was in really bad shape. And it also has a small accessory structure that is down next to the water, which is actually in the public portion. But they did indicate that they would be removing the privy and that small accessory structure as well, however, it wasn't removed at the time with the construction.
Okay, so you covered, you covered both those?
Right.
One and three. So do we want to defer?
So Lot 1?
I have to make a motion to defer Lot 14.
14, okay. So we can handle that one. We're on that one first, anyway, so.
Okay.
Motion to defer till the May 19 meeting?
Right.
By Commissioner Shran?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Peterson. Call roll, please.
Shran?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, so 3 is going to get lumped in, or just, we're going to carry it separate because we took it out, so 2, we're going to motion to...
So we need to defer it also?
Because of the accessory building, or we're good?
No, that was the accessory building on Lot 14 Magnino A-Track that you just deferred.
Okay.
The other one that was, the one that was originally deferred, which was Lot 1 Magnino A, is the one that they removed the small cabin on.
Okay, okay.
So we're good for the transfer?
You're good for it.
Okay, all right.
Cut it.
So do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Holt?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Stevens. Call roll, please.
Holt?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Peterson?
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, that was it, right? Okay, number four, citizens' participation. Okay, it's a little different from last time. Okay, we'll go into some proclamations then. Oh, you're so efficient. You know this is all about you, right? It's all about you. Okay, the first one is for Police Week. Whereas, we are here today to recognize the hard work and dedication of the many men and women police officers who have chosen a profession that reflects the highest degree of honor, strength, respect, and distinction. And whereas, these courageous individuals choose to wear the uniform and selflessly risk their lives and performance of their duties, serving our community with tireless effort, knowing full well the dangers and challenges that encompasses their day, as they protect and serve the public with pride and dignity. Whereas, the citizens of Shawnee and our nation remember and honor those men and women of such great valor who have chosen to take an oath to serve and protect by safeguarding life, liberty, and property. And whereas, in commemoration of Police Week, we pause to remember and pay solemn tribute to those officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice, and likewise offer our support to their families and our respect to their fellow officers for their devotion, courage, pride, and compassion. And whereas, during the week of May 11 through 17, 2008, citizens of Shawnee and across our nation publicly observe the heroic efforts of our fallen officers and join in salute with families, friends, and comrades to show gratitude and appreciation for their sacrifice on our behalf. Now therefore, I Chuck Mills, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May 11 through 17, 2008, as Police Week in the City of Shawnee.
I just want to say that on behalf of the Shawnee Police Department, I'm very proud to accept this proclamation, and thank you very much.
Okay, and this one is for Click It or Ticket. Okay, I like that, Click It. Whereas, injuries and deaths from motor vehicles, crashes bring loss and suffering to the citizens of this community. And whereas, the cost of such injuries brings economic hardship to families, communities' health care system, and that emergency response resources are significantly impacted by injuries of motor vehicle crashes. And whereas, in 2007, Oklahoma had a safety belt use of 83.1 percent, and that safety belt use in pickup trucks was 75.3 percent. And whereas, in 2006, approximately 765 people were killed in traffic accidents in Oklahoma. And whereas, research shows that pickup trucks in fatal crashes rollover twice as often as passenger cars, and that wearing your safety belt reduces the risk of dying in a rollover pickup truck crash by up to 80 percent. And whereas, young males, nighttime drivers and passengers, rural residents, teens, and pickup truck drivers are at the greatest risk due to lower safety belt use. And whereas, the Click It or Ticket enforcement mobilization will run May 19 to June 1, and now therefore, I Chuck Mills, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, join public and private sector leaders across Oklahoma and the region in supporting the Click It or Ticket enforcement mobilization, May 19 to June 1, and do urge all visitors and citizens of Shawnee to buckle up in all vehicles, day or night, proclaim this fifth day of May, 2008.
Well, we're hoping, of course, we're always enforcing violations having to do with not wearing seat belts, but we're hoping we don't have to write one ticket because everybody's in compliance, so we will be out looking for these types of violations even more so during this timeframe. But like I said, it would be nice not to write one ticket on this. Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay. Okay, number six, City Manager's Presentation to Employee of the Month, Chris Thomas, Administrator of Support Services for the Shawnee Police Department. Come forward, please. Accept your commendations.
Chris Thomas has been employed with the city since April of 2007. Sorry, he just celebrated his first anniversary. Chris came to us from Lawton after retiring as a captain in the police department, at 25-plus years of service. He works currently as the Shawnee Police Department Administrator of Support Services. He supervises the operations of the 911 Communication Center, records, and the animal shelter. Chris is also the department's grant manager. He's currently working in managing five different grants. He's also overseeing the newly started Reserve Officer Program. He's a member of our local dropout retention committee, trying to assist other citizens and community leaders in reducing the school dropout rate in the city, and he's a board member of the Shawnee Police Foundation. He's been instrumental in bringing, trying to bring animal rights to the forefront in our community by bringing many people and groups to one table. The outcome of this is a new organization known as the Animal Rescue Center of Shawnee. Chris is married to his wife Brenda, who's an English teacher at Shawnee High School. They have four children. One is Bryant, who's a Marine Gunnery Sergeant, who's done two tours. And then Bryant is married as well, and...
He's got a grandson, right?
Okay, Chris Rue is a police officer with the town of Apache. Amanda, who just got out of the Army Military Police Corps, returned from Iraq, just gave then Chris and Brenda their second grandchild. And finally, Kimberly is in the Navy and is following a career in law enforcement as well, so.
That's cool.
Wow.
Yeah. Do you want to...
Well, let's go ahead and do this. As Dr. Collard just said, a year ago, I came here to Shawnee, and when I left Lawton, that lonely Sunday, when I drove here and left my wife in Lawton to sell her house, you know, I'm pretty nervous, you know, after you spend 25-plus years with one family and you go on to another one, you're a little nervous of what to expect. And she said, oh, you'll do very well, and here I am a year later, getting this award. So it means more to me because of that, you know, just being here a year and getting this award. I've come to find the employees here with the City of Shawnee, Neva, Don, Tom, Steve, Chief, Dr. Collard, you guys, everybody's been so great, and it's just made it all that much more enjoyable for me and my wife. And so we love it here, and Shawnee is at the edge of pretty good things here, I think. And we've started it down there, and a lot of other people are on board and going along with it, so I better shut up. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I want to, I'm not, actually, I wanted to grab you again, not to roast you, although I was tempted. Yes, but no, that's okay. The, Chris has done a terrific job in his support services, and it's nice as a City Manager from both our Chief Mathis and Chris to not hear about animal issues anymore, other than maybe the initial phone call at 2:00 in the morning, but then I just make another phone call, and it's done. And I also appreciate how far he's brought the record system and the communication system. And if you ever get the chance, you ought to see his office, because if nothing else, he's raised a standard down in the police department. That's kind of his idea.
You mean, you can see the top of his desk?
Well, there's a lieutenant that he's had a real good influence on.
Oh, okay, okay. Maybe you come over to my office, I need some help. Thank you, Chris. And I want to thank the Chief for dragging you up here out of Lawton. What a great find, what a great addition to the City of Shawnee, bringing a high level of professionalism to everything he touches. So, you know any more guys down there, let's get them on up here. We appreciate it. Okay, number seven, review and discuss a proposed ordinance requiring a special use permit for all treatment centers, defining treatment centers, and assigning zoning classifications with a conditional use permit.
Yes, so you have in your packets, beginning, I believe, on page 117, a proposed ordinance that addresses treatment centers. As we're all aware, we have been working through an anomaly, a gap in our ordinances, and as well as the state law. In fact, I was on the phone for quite a while late this evening, just about an hour before this meeting started, with Representative Steele, who's running point at the state level as well. Immediately following our meeting two weeks ago, Commissioner Peterson contacted me and directed me to come up with a draft ordinance to plug the gaps in the system here. So what you have in front of you, and there'll be no action taken tonight, I have had some really good discussions with people immediately in the neighborhood, and I presume that you'll be providing testimony when it goes to public hearing in the next couple of weeks. Essentially, the salient features are that a permit, a special use permit, will be required anytime one of these facilities is to be cited. As you remember, the gap was that it was a use by right. We made, we did quite a bit of research, again, at, from the guidance I received, and we realized that that's not unusual. Our ordinance, as it currently sits, is kind of common, however, it does need to be changed. The other feature is that even with a permit, it's only would be allowed in C... The other feature is that even with a permit, it's only would be allowed in C3s, 4s, and 5s, and the industrial districts. The other thing that is important in this proposal is it would require a thousand-foot separation. There's an interesting anomaly in the state law that for treatment of sex offenders, those counseling centers, there's only a 300-foot separation from certain uses. But the state law states that for treatment of drug and alcohol, there's a thousand-foot separation. So this includes a thousand-foot separation as well. That's under review. There will be a notification for the property owners within whatever range is selected. And then, of course, through the review process, an examining, examination of all types of activities. And at this point, again, since Commissioner Peterson's been actively involved in this, I don't know if you have any comments as well.
Well, I first want to say thank you for bringing this back to us so quickly. We all remember two weeks ago when we had so many citizens speak up against this, and it really, it hit home with me. I mean, we all knew that it was a use by right, but when someone, I think from the audience, said, speaking to us, "How dare you vote to okay this in my neighborhood." And I thought, first thought is, I didn't vote to do anything, and, you know, wouldn't do that, and this is used by right. And then the next split-second thing was, why didn't we? Why didn't it come to us? We look at putting a one-operator beauty salon in neighborhoods, you know, things like that. And all of a sudden, I thought, why didn't it come to us? And some of the recommendations that we had talked about, you know, like, well, just put it in industrial, or just put it in commercial, or just put it north of I-40. Those areas don't work either. And I really think that it needs to be a conditional use, and it needs to have a public hearing with every location, even the ones that are within these districts. I mean, we have, we have industrial districts on Harrison. We have industrial districts that have, you know, Phase 7 next to them, and apartment houses. I mean, just because you say, put it in industrial, that doesn't necessarily work for us in some of the zoning areas that we have in town. So I think this is a really, really good start. I, you know, we'll see what happens when one, you know, when we get a conditional use permit, you know, from someone to have a location of this kind of business. But we'll go through it, just, you know, just like we will have accepted this ordinance. I know we couldn't do anything with the location that was being proposed at the time, but we can certainly look at something and get this in process just ASAP.
What was the discussion? I know I talked to Representative Steele as well on the, on the state level. He's trying to piggyback an amendment into a bill to make that happen faster. Did he confirm that, once again, that he's trying to fast-track this loophole that's out there?
Yes, yes, there is. As a matter of fact, he works on it pretty much every day. It'll be in this session.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're moving very quickly as well.
Excellent, okay.
He's been very decisive. I want to appreciate, I want to express my appreciation to Ms. Johns and Ms. Jackaway as well for their help in crafting this, and again, Commissioner Peterson for her guidance. This is the right thing to do, to plug this gap, to ensure a permit is required, and the separation requirements and notices. Now, in terms of the process from here, it's going to go for a discussion, I believe, Nancy, Wednesday of this week for the planning commission. And then the following Wednesday, it'll be a public hearing process.
Thursday?
Thursday the 15th, okay.
Timing.
Okay, so Thursday the 15th, there'll be a special planning commission meeting in these chambers at 1:30, is that right, in the afternoon? Well, maybe 1:00, I don't know. Whatever. To, and that'll be a public hearing with input, correct? And it'll come back to the city council for probably final review and another public hearing on the 19th of May, correct? So that's the process. And we will keep you advised.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for handling that.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, number eight, public hearing and consider an ordinance for a planned unit development, PUD of Majestic Dominion Properties, a revised PUD of Howard E. Tommy Enterprises for property located on Harrison, north of a transportation parkway, applicant Majestic Dominion Incorporated, case number P-12-08, deferred from April 20, or April 7th of '08. We'll open the public hearing and staff report.
Yeah, nothing, machines are...
Remember now, you just have to push it one time because it just kind of goes to sleep, and then we'll wake back up. Oh. There you go, see? It's magic.
Oh, talk about, wow.
We have the magic technician in the back.
Okay, thanks.
Behind the curtain.
City Commission item number seven is P-12-08, is the plan in development of Majestic Dominion Properties. It's a revised PUD. The original PUD is called Howard E. Tommy Enterprises. The original PUD, thank you, was primarily a transportation-oriented type of use, commercial, industrial-type uses, partly as already developed with hotels, as you're aware, and some other uses out there. This piece of property, this PUD, is only amending the PUD that you see in green, if you have a map in your packet, but on the screen, the area in green is the area that's being amended. Tracks 1, 2, and 3 are shown in red, blue, and green. The red is primarily commercial activity with maybe large, big, big box type uses there on the north side of Transportation Parkway. Uh-huh, there we go. On the south side is planned to have some restaurant facilities right through here. This area is an existing pond, and it is a detention facility. It has to remain as such, and is partly, you know, covered by the PUD and secured and will be maintained that way. But there will be commercial off through here and restaurants through this area. Track 2 is primarily office in this area with some commercial and some commercial in this area as well, but mostly office in this area. Track 3 is residential with the large lot right here being proposed for apartments with a, I think it's 14 dwelling units an acre. And this area right through here is proposed primarily as condominium. However, it will be allowed to do apartments if the market doesn't bear out. So there are two possibility of development on those two sites, either apartments or condominiums. The section down through here will be greenbelt, park area with a park right in this area. This area through here is mostly drainage and won't be developed, but there is a park area right in this little corner. This was continued from last time, there were some major problems with the text and maps that we got, had to get all ironed out before we got very far. There is a summary of the development regulations. C3 are the primary uses in the track 1, commercial area. Track 2 is primarily C1 and C2 uses. And they also put an additional restriction on track 2 to only allow operations between 6:00 AM and 7:30 PM because of its close proximity there to the residential areas. And track 3 again is primarily residential with R3 and condominiums, but also possible R3 along the whole area. This is in compliance with the Conferent Plan in general with the higher intensity commercial slash industrial, commercial uses and residential. The staff was concerned about adding the residential use into this area, and it's been a major kind of a negotiating process between the developer and the engineer and the staff, trying to feel like we're having enough input into their overall plan so that the residential would be protected. And some of the things you see there are the limiting of the timing of when the operations can take place. This planning commission talked about some other issues and asked that additional landscaping buffer be proposed right through here, buffering this area from this particular area, and also ask for some additional buffering right on the north side of Transportation Parkway, a 20-foot landscape strip in this area, also for the same, right similar buffer which in the residential and the other office area. The, probably the major item on here was the transportation aspects of this. A commercial-industrial development has certain types of traffic during the day in different times, and when you add residential to it, that kind of adds a little different problem to the area. And so we were very concerned that there was only one entry out of this area, although there is, there was an original one, a step street. The possibility that going north anytime soon was distant, and we didn't want to rely on that happening. It may happen, it may not happen, but we do provide for the step street in case it does. But in this new PUD, they're also providing a step street at this location. So there are two opportunities for this development to have additional street access up to West Tech Road, at this location, at this location. The second item we talked about, and that was probably one of our major problems, was this strip right here is actually a private drive that will be put in as a secondary private common access drive when this, when this is developed. The negotiated kind of agreement that we've kind of all put in the PUD and for you to review is that Phase 1 would be the apartment complex right in this area right here. After that, the developer has agreed that no matter what's developed after that, if it's the condos, if it's the commercial area, if it's office, or that this additional public street and the common access drive will be put in to provide that secondary means of access to people who are living now in this back area. So that was the primary thing that we had some real difficulties with, and we feel like it's been ironed out, and the developer has, has made the commitment to put that in at the second phase of development, but they wanted to go ahead and get some part of the development in first in one phase. And talking to the fire department, they were okay with the first phase going in and not requiring the secondary access until the second phase started. So that was what's in the PUD at this point. There still were a few things, and in fact, the engineer and developer have already cleared up most of these things, but there are a few things that we just want to be sure that were covered. So when we get the final document, maps together, that we know that you're all aware, these all have to change and fix. And a few of those were just getting the data agreed upon and understanding what the maximum number of units are and a few of those things that we dealt with, understanding that there are sidewalks required. Transportation Parkway, Regal Road, Dominion Lane are all collector streets and must-have sidewalks. The developer has also agreed that the cul-de-sac that goes back into the condominiums, if it's developed that way, that even though it's not a collector street, it's a local street, they will put a four-foot sidewalk along there to serve the residents up there as well. Issue of a temporary emergency access, a secondary access drive, like we talked to you about. The one other item that came up that we had a lot of negotiating over was signage. The PUD addresses signage, and I'm going to have to go back to the map so I can talk to you about that. Here we go. There we go. This area from I-40 is approximately right through here, and West Tech Road is somewhere right up in that area. This area is known as the I-40 corridor, and there is a special allowance of 40-foot-tall signage through here. In a normal, if this were just a regular development, we would look at many 40-foot signs along these, along these properties and lots through here. The developer authored and between negotiation, we kind of came up with some ideas that there's, they're putting in their development, in the plating process, and you'll see it on the plating plat, a common lot that goes right through here, which would, I believe it's about 800 feet long, and they've, in the text of the document, they've asked for four pole signs right through here with a map with a, I think, separation of 200 feet in this 800-foot stretch. The four pole signs would be a typical type sign you would see and currently see on some of the hotels that are already out there. Those four pole signs would be allowed to advertise any kind, any use that's within this red track. An additional fifth sign would be located approximately here. They will have to do some replating to get the common lot in, but additional post sign there would also allow advertising on these tracks right through here. These are not billboards, they can only advertise what's specifically on these tracks. The remaining signage in the entire development is a maximum height of 10-foot ground signs with landscaping. So, and we, and there are even additional limits on how many signs along each of the streets, one limiting the number that there are, but we felt that was a fairly good trade-off going with only 10-foot signs in the rest of the development. That would keep all that high signage down that could be all through this area by keeping those four through here and one here, all the rest of the signs in this area are 10-foot tall, what we call ground signs, monument signs, where they come from the ground up, 10-foot tall, and they have landscaping on them, and no, no pole signs allowed in the rest of the development. So that was a very good thing, actually, developers came up with to limit the type of kind of graffiti we get in the air sometimes.
Sky clutter.
Yeah. So that is one of the, other item that was a major issue that we dealt with. Let's see if I can get back to what we were talking about. Common signs, driveway, we have some driveway limits on Harrison. The one area that the city engineer has not had a complete opportunity to reduce the drainage, so that still is a little bit limbo. There may be some issues with that big pond and some drainage issues that he will have to deal with, but as long as we understand that he has not had the opportunity to review that completely, and there may be some additional easement requirements that he will have to work with the engineer over, but those are kind of a fairly large project that Mr. Crowe is dealing with. The other thing we've asked for is when they do submit their final flats, we'd like to see a copy of the plateness that each one submitted, because we'd like to make sure that they are addressing the maintenance of all the common areas properly, we want to know how that's going to be addressed. So we've asked that those be submitted when they submit final flats, and the 20-foot landscape strip along the north side of Parkway. So that's the development summary and the summary of what the leftover few issues that we're still dealing with. And as far as I understand, developer has agreed to your PUD ask where there hasn't, there's not an complutor asking board, just we want to make sure that we all understand that that is what's being required, requested. Okay, oh, just for your information, I think it's in your staff report, but the maximum number of units on that multifamily track is 129 units, which is 14 units an acre. And the additional 30 condominium townhouse units, if they do townhouses, they'll be 30. If they go to apartments on that secondary lot, the maximum number of units will be 72. The 4 can use an acre is a fairly low to middle density. That's not a very, that's not a high density where they could go to.
Is that in here somewhere?
It is in there. I believe it's, should be under development summary.
Okay, okay. Kept looking for, okay.
So after all the review of the last month and all the negotiation, we've gone with the staff recommends of approval of the PUD with the conditions of 1 through 8 requirements still being in place, understanding that the engineering issue is still being reviewed. When they bring the final plat, that will hopefully be all resolved at that point in time.
I'll wait till later.
Okay. Anyone wish to speak against? Anyone wish to speak for? Close public hearing, discussion, questions, motion?
I had one question, but I think it's answered in here. Want to get in here on the sidewalk because it says four foot, and as far as I know right now, it's still required six.
Correct, the four foot, let me back up to the map.
But it says by code, so that's covered.
Transportation Parkway is right here. I think that's Regal Road and that's Dominion Lane. Those three streets are collector streets. They will have six-foot sidewalks on them as required by our code.
That's right.
The street we're talking about with the four foot is this side right here, is actually a local residential street, and under our code currently is not required to have sidewalks at all. But the developer has agreed to put on this street four-foot sidewalks for the residential use because of the density that's in there.
Yeah, I seen it by code, I just didn't see that until I started asking.
Right, it's because it's a local street and currently not required to have sidewalks.
Right, okay. Good question.
On the history, it says that it allows for development of multi-family or single-family residential, but in the staff report, it says that your recommendation is medium to high density. And I am concerned about the single-family residences here, so...
I think it's the condominiums that we're calling single-family.
Okay.
They're actually condominiums if they're proposing.
So they're single-family, but there might be medium density. That would clarify, because a condominium would not be a typical single-family dwelling like, like we would think.
Right.
Okay.
This area through here, the current proposal is for 30 condominium units in this area right through here.
Okay.
And 100 and, it was 29, somewhere in there, apartment complex right in this area. The apartment complex is approximately 14 units an acre. The secondary plan on this one, and I guess it depends on marketing and development, on the condominium where they go to apartments or not, the apartments would then go up to 72 units. So 30 units per acre is, I guess, maybe probably around six or seven dwelling units an acre, if 72 is 14. if 72 is 14. But that's the...
Okay.
It's the same density, though. 14 units per acre either way.
Right, maximum. Actually even tied to an actual number, not just what use we actually have in there. I think the developer may be looking at market and what's available in there, so they want a little bit of flexibility on whether it's condominiums will work or the... And that is where the apartments are coming.
And the list of potential either C1, C3 type of businesses on here, you're okay with those in this location?
Yeah, it's, the current PUD out there has a whole lot more intense uses. They've brought the uses down, and specifically in this area, they're mostly office and C1 type uses as well as here. The higher commercial uses are in this area with, the proposal is some restaurant space right through here. It's not uncommon to see this type of developments, just whether, we had a real hard time making sure, we'd like to be sure, because it's hard to see in the future, that these types of uses do go well together, and it's...
Well, I mean, under Track 2, it says the following C3 allowances will be permitted following C1 zoning requirements. And I look at this list, and of course, things like mini storage kind of pop out to me, and especially since you just said that the first development will be Track 3, and then we're gonna start putting commercial development on there. And my concern is that the future homeowners or residences in Track 3 understand what can happen in Track 1 and Track 2 from this list right here and not come back and say, "Why did you allow a mini storage in my backyard?" Because that's on the list of available uses.
That's right. Now, there are uses in there that you would like to strike out. We've gone through the same thing and struck out.
You've done the strike, okay.
We had a whole list we took out, and they agreed to take out.
But again, commission has the, someone has the authority right now, for that matter, to add to that list or modify it in any way. That's the purpose of our discussion.
And, you know, I only know of things that we've had people speak against, and there are a couple of them on this list, and, I mean, I don't know if there's some other types of things that might be...
If you have some that you'd like to point out, maybe the developer might speak to those if there's a reason why they particularly want them on the list.
Okay, well, mini storage is one. We just had that one. Another one is pet shop. It says no boarding, but we had some discussions for one that was moved to a C3 location, and boarding, nonboarding, they still have pins outside, and that's a, can be a disruption to residences. I mean, I just kind of went through the list. I'm sure you did, too. Overnight campgrounds, truck sales. I don't see a bus depot anywhere in here, so I guess that one got taken out.
That got taken out.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, you know...
I absolutely understand.
I just want to make sure it wasn't covered under something else that I don't understand. I mean, are y'all okay with this list?
With regards to Track 2?
First time I've seen it tonight, earlier this week, so...
Yeah. Well, the majority of these appear to be small businesses where you would have some consumer traffic, but not necessarily a lot.
Right.
But you're going to have people in and out parking, whereas like mini storage, I think, envisioned something more commercial-like, industrial, something, so maybe that's something we ought to look at. On Track 1, I have a problem with the fact that a city or county jail can go into Track 1 when we're right next to a residential area. It's gonna be a high population area. Now, not that we have plans to build a city jail because we don't have the money, but a private facility could possibly come in.
This list is, these C3 uses will not be allowed.
Right, this is the not.
Just wanted to make sure.
No drag strips.
Some of these are, yeah, we need to...
Whereas on Track 2, you're looking, that list is, shall be allowed, kind of.
A little confusing.
Well, then we need to move mini storage over to the not.
Okay. I guess if you may ask the developer to speak to those things.
If I can make a comment, again, that's with boarding on C3 as well, animal hospital as well.
Yeah.
Now, if we'd had time to get back to our codes, our building codes, some of this would've been cleaned up.
Maybe.
Maybe. Well, I mean, what we were looking for was greater refinement, because this has been kind of generic in the past, and to get to a point where, you know, everyone's got their opinion on the deal, but the thing that we've talked about for four years is, next to a neighborhood, we don't mind having commercial, but it needs to be services that are offered, mainly for those residents or residents in the area that, you know, would be like a dry cleaner or a convenience store or something of that nature.
And that's, I think we're trying to accomplish that in here, that there are a few uses in there that, given what maybe past occurrences in Shawnee, you may feel like they just don't belong there, we need to strike those out or talk about them. I would point out that, because I didn't notice this either, the bus terminal is not listed under Track 1 as not allowed, and maybe it should be.
Well, we're just gonna do with, like you said, this mini storage, what, would that degrade the property? Because certainly...
Well, maybe.
Potentially.
It's kind of like, who comes first? If the mini storage was there, and then you have a, you buy a house, or you build a house next to it, then you know it was there when you did that property. If you do the house first and then commercial development comes, that's where, that's where we start getting a rub, and that's where this development, I mean, for you just saying tonight that Track 3's gonna develop first, we're gonna get all the homes in there, and then we're gonna look at this list, and there are some things on here that we've heard about before. And so you're right, so maybe mini storage should move back over to a Track 1 instead of Track 2 right next to residence. And I don't want to pick that, you know, pick on that one. I live right next door to a mini storage, but, you know, we have heard from residences who bought the house first and then a mini storage wants to go in, and that is not, not what their understanding is of what's gonna be next to their property.
Right, and is the plan for the condominiums to be for sale? I mean, you know, people normally...
That's my understanding.
Okay, people normally rent apartments, and condominiums many times start off being homes for sale.
That's my understanding of what they're saying. If I'm hearing you right, you want to add bus terminal to the not allowed use in this area, and you'd like to also take off mini storage as not being allowed in Track 2. Were you concerned with the pet shop no boarding or the animal hospital? Were those the other two uses?
I was concerned about those next to the residential areas, yes.
Especially if there's gonna be outdoor.
Right, because they still have outdoor pins whether they board or not, and that has, that in the past, right or wrong, that's been an issue for us, that, you know, the owners had to mitigate somehow, so...
Yeah, of course, they're not very far from a major interstate. There's gonna be a lot of noise there.
I know.
I'm not sure how you'd ever shut that down anyway. It's, I mean, I don't know about you, I live a few miles away, and I can still hear it at certain times, so...
Do you play the jake, right?
Yeah. It really, and you've got, of course, you've got a lot of hotels popping up right around that area, and traffic will be generated there, it's a little different, but the highway, and even Highway 18 with its development, is gonna become much more traveled by heavy trucks and, you know, things like that, so...
And those are some of the uses they did take out of Track 1, trucks, truck stops.
Just in the vicinity.
Tried to remove some of those higher...
Took all that out.
So those three uses, I'm sorry, core uses, bus terminal in Track 1, mini storage in Track 2, the animal hospital in Track 2, and the pet shop in Track 2 are the four that, on these lists...
At this point, yeah. They can move to Track 1.
Those, the three on Track 2 can move to Track 1, okay.
But I do think some of the things that they took out of Track 1, I mean, just as an entrance into a neighborhood, might be not the best, and a lot of traffic and those kind of things, too, come with some of these businesses.
If the developer has any problem with this discussion, if you want to speak to it.
You gotta get your names over.
Yeah, come on up here.
Mark Crook, I'm the project manager for Majestic Dominion, and I don't believe that we would have any problem with those items being changed in that listing. As we have the development platted out, those are not issues that we have intention for. I don't see a problem there.
Okay, I'm just trying to prevent something else in the future, too. I mean, approving it now and then something coming up a couple of years and possibly causing use of problems, too. Yeah.
So I'll let the engineer who's working on the project know about this discussion change, so please.
Okay.
Good.
So can I make a, do you need a motion?
Yes. I'm sure they'd like that motion.
Like a motion to approve the PUD as revised with the eight technical issues now and the four restrictions or changes on uses that we just talked about. Is that okay?
That's good.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collier. Read the title, please.
...concerned zone classification, following strike property located on Shawnee, Oklahoma City with lots 8, 9, the subdivision, due to subdivision, park, quarter, section 32, and the left north, range 4 is the middle, and the left can have a couple of quarters by their, the evidence of robbery from PUD, planned unit development of Howard &amp; Tommy Enterprises, emergency transportation center for PUD, planned unit development of Majestic Dominion properties, the revised PUD of Howard &amp; Tommy Enterprises, the name of the division is on that to be Shawnee 4.
Call roll, please.
Peterson? Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
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 O'Neil?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, number nine, consider approval of the preliminary plat for Majestic Dominion for property located on Harrison, north of Transportation Parkway, applicant Majestic Dominion Incorporated, case S15-08 deferred from April 7th of '08. Staff?
This is item S1508, it's a preliminary plat covering the Majestic Dominion addition. It does not completely cover the area we just talked about as being the PUD, because this area right through here is already platted as lots 8 and 9 of Yagni, is that any of your friends? Yagni addition.
Close enough?
Close enough. So this preliminary plat covers this area, mostly eastern, probably about 60% of the site. As you can see there, actually, the dark area shaded has already platted, so this preliminary plat covers the unshaded area right through here.
Good.
There are no final flats submitted at this time. Same issues, it's sidewalks, which we've already taken, here we've talked about. The cul-de-sac was one area that was addressed in the plat that's not addressed as part of PUD. Let me go over to the map real quick. Our subdivision requirements only allow a 500-foot cul-de-sac or deadened street, and this one is approximately 700 feet in length. The width, the little bulbous areas right through here is a little bit different. This allows for a little bit better transportation network in and out. It's kind of a very large cul-de-sac with a island in the middle. Our codes don't allow parking on the public streets within the cul-de-sacs of that nature. And there was a, I think it may be the doctrine or maybe it's not, but the cul-de-sac right here and right here has a actually common lot right in the middle of the cul-de-sac, and that will, common lot will have about four extra parking spaces in this condominium style area, and that's probably one of the problems that usually comes up, is there's no parking.
Don't they have some of those in Windmill Ridge already that has that parking out there?
And it's the private street thing.
Right.
This is a public street, and that was...
So that's the difference?
So they have a common lot to allow to do that. If they were private street, maybe we'd build a little different. At this point, it's proposed as a public street. And so that's what this, this kind of a large turnaround type thing, so if they, little oversized cul-de-sacs, allow a little bit better turning area if there's any problem inside and out for going around to get it out. We were concerned about making sure to get it out. But the planning commission approved the variance for the 700-foot cul-de-sac, and we have that listed for your information as well.
And the fire department has approved that?
Right, fire department's seen it. And of course, when the final flats come in and any building permit plans come in for apartments, the fire department gets to review those again, but at this point, they've had, they've not had any big problems with what's been proposed.
Will there be any increase, I'm sorry, will there be any increased maintenance of street plans because of those?
I don't know if I can answer that. John Karlik, you might have some ideas about that, but the homeowners association has to maintain the commoners, and that's why we wanted to see when they, when they give their final plans, the flats, we want to see their covenants to make sure that that's being addressed, and that is an issue.
Yeah.
Because we want to be sure that that are going to be maintained.
Yeah, that's the question I ask, and if they're gonna be in covenants, I don't know.
Their proposal is to have a landscaping, and it has a couple parking spaces in those two areas. The same kind of few issues, the data, just clarifying on our, the final document, the sidewalks, the clarity that this mostly for commission, planning commission, city commission, that sidewalks are being put in, and the issue of timing on the secondary access point, when it's gonna come in, who's gonna put it in, and a understanding what the common signage is about, driveway limits that will be addressed again in the planning stages. Again, the city engineer is still reviewing the drainage plans, and will have, will probably be working with the engineer on that issue. There's quite a bit of, kind of unique drainage areas out there with the big pond, and John's working that through, wanting to know what the covenant's gonna look like. The variance, number eight, being the variance on Majestic Way. We did address them, this is more for the developers understanding that when they do come in with the two public streets that step to the north, the one to the west will have the common driveway that goes out to Harrison, but the one that's to the east will probably have to have a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of it, because it's too long to have, to worry about someone going up there and not being able to get out. It's just a need for a temporary cul-de-sac at the end to come in and out. And the number 10 is the one the planning commission added, requesting for some additional landscape strips between the commercial areas and the residential areas. So with those 10 items, staff's recommend approval of preliminary plat and your acceptance of the variance to the length of deadened streets or cul-de-sacs, which is section 40.2.1T1 and subdivision regulations.
Motion.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Majestic Dominion with, subject to the now 10 technical considerations and approving the variance on subdivision regulation, section 40.2.1T1.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holt. Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Number 10, public hearing and considered ordinance for a planned unit development of Bryan Street Development and amended PUD Fiddler Properties for property located at the northwest corner of Independence and Bryan, applicant Bryan Street Development, case number P13-08, deferred from April 7, 2008. Public hearing is open. Staff report.
Bryan Street PUD is, again, an amended PUD of an older development. This one, however, is the entire development is being amended, rather than the Majestic Dominion, while only part of that development was being amended. This project is located on the northwest corner of Bryan and Independence. There is already existing a nursing home located at that facility that was built a few years after the original PUD was put in. You can see in these two graphics, the top one is what was approved in 2006. The nursing home as shown is where it was built and currently exists today. At that time, the proposal was to have most of the residential all off to the north of the development with commercial and office space all in the west and southeast of the project. The difference between the 2006 and 2008 is the nursing home stayed the same, but they kind of flipped the development, partly I understand because of problems with drainage. There is a large drainage area right through here that's being proposed, is being left open and park type of setting. The residential is right through here in this direction, mostly duplexes or quadplexes right through this area. This is a small commercial area. The assisted living complex would be here with additional office, commercial activities here, mainly proposed to be medical-related activities. So this is kind of a... to be reserved. One of the problems, and I have a map available that shows this, the floodplain actually comes up through this area into the area currently proposed for development. The plan is to work with FEMA to bring that property out of the floodplain, and the PUD, we asked to retext in there that if they cannot achieve that, then they will have to come back and replat that show a different development because it's possible they can get it out. It's also just as possible they can't get it out. It's a very sticky thing to try to do down. The proposal is to bring a median divided entryway right at this location on Independence up to meet the current loop drive that's in place. All of the drives and streets within this development are private. There's no public streets within here. These driveways are 24-foot, I call them driveways because they're not streets, are 24-foot wide, and they will access, all of these little fourplexes and duplexes access off of these drives. The loop goes around, the existing loop is already there, but this one will go and once have a block further off to this area, then also come in here and access this point. The one area that we, I guess we had a harder time working with, kind of like the Majestic one, is the relationship between the housing on the west and the commercial here on the east and trying to bring that down so the same reasons, you know? If you want to live there...
Looking at the back of them.
Well, the housing sides it onto this driveway, and the commercial has been proposed to back onto that driveway. We were concerned that it would become an alleyway of sorts. And so the text in the PUD addresses issues of garbage cans on the street and other areas, so some landscaping and some setbacks. We're still concerned about a little bit, but the text in the PUD has addressed it a lot better than it did originally. The original plan actually showed the garbage cans sitting there, literally right there.
Yeah, the big...
And we've asked that that not be done, but the text in the PUD won't let that happen because we do not want the street to look like it's just an alleyway, and you're living behind the alleyway. And I know the developer's not intending to do that, so we just have to be concerned that five years from now, they put it in, it's great, but 55 years from now, I'm not going to be here. So we want to make sure it's good long-term. That's what we're trying to accomplish. We hope we got there with the text that we asked to put in about that. This area through here, again, is most of intended to be more medical-based type of uses, and you'll see that in the uses, the summary uses in the PUD. We did ask them to take out a lot of uses and only go to C1 and C2 uses through here. The one, I guess, difference on that, when they did ask to have, to be allowed to put alcohol-based restaurants and stuff in here, however, there still would be conditional use permits, and they would have to come to the city for that permit. There could be a good opportunity for a nice type of restaurant there or some sort, especially if you have people who want to walk to restaurants and walk to commercial areas that are living in this area. So as long as it's coming in as conditional use permit, it gives them the opportunity to do it if it does fit, but gives the city the opportunity to look at it and say it doesn't fit. But that's one of the C3 uses that are listed as allowed as a conditional use permit.
Of course, we'll need sidewalks for people to walk to that restaurant, right?
Correct. And they are putting sidewalks on most of these private, again, they're not required to, but because of type of use it is, and residential we've asked that they do that, and their master plan shows sidewalks along these areas, and most of them are 4-foot wide.
And they have regular sidewalk requirements on Bryan and Independence?
Correct. On the public streets on Bryan and Independence, there are required 6-foot sidewalks.
Okay.
See if there's any other issues. Two, lots of two. Yeah, the block two had just very limited C3 uses because of the same problem we had for worrying about what type of uses to go in there. There's a limit on the, there's a maximum number of units, and I'd be surprised if they got those in there, but you never know. It depends upon that FEMA, whether they're able to take that in or out or not.
And a liquor store is conditional use also?
Excuse me?
Isn't a liquor store a conditional use also?
Yes, yes. The assisted living complex has additional setbacks from the north and from the west because there's the potential long-term of residential development from north and west, and so we have additional setbacks from those areas. And let's see, those are the zones, the divided entry. We did also ask on that street that we refer to as worrying about becoming an alleyway that there'd be no parking allowed on that street for the same reason. It's a major transportation network from Independence into this area, and we didn't want to have any parking along there. Trash container issue. We also asked that utility boxes and those things be visually hidden and screened from that area as well. I think we hit about everything that...oh, I see the developer, he's way to the back. I think we hit everything that we discussed at that time. There were some residents who lived just to the west of here at the planning commission, and they might be here tonight. They did have some concerns about the flood and the floodplain area and the drainage area and development of that area.
Good. So...
Staff recommends approval with the conditions that we talked about. I think there's four that address the issues we just discussed.
Will go ahead and allow people that wish to speak against this development or have Anyone that wishes to speak for? Okay. Close the public hearing. Other questions, discussion?
Move to accept staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Schran. Second. Second by Commissioner Collier.
Nancy, will the drainage be addressed as development or as it's platted?
Mr. Karleke does have some drainage plants in presently. We will know more when they, when the developer and the engineer find out whether their FEMA issue is resolved or not. They may have to come back in with a new development, or it might work. But Mr. Karleke does have some drainage issues that he's reviewing. The property owners that I talked about on here, they live, this is Bryan, they live in this area right through here, and apparently they, it's not caused by this location, it's drainage that's coming back in this area currently having problems, and they were concerned how this is going to impact them. Mr., John may want to address that better. I'm thinking that it may help, but it's hard.
Because there's a break that runs back behind and cuts across.
The original development that's proposed here, this was all going to be commercial, you know, paved in and concrete, and it probably would have been worse.
Right.
In this plan, there's a lot of green belt open space still in here. I understand from the engineer on this project, they will be getting out to provide a better holding area, detention area for the rain that comes down, apparently, and I'm just listening to this, John probably addressed it better, there is a, some major flooding problems or issues with Independence and water that comes down from the northwest and heads across this area, if I'm saying this wrong, Tom, tell me. But there are some issues here with water, and I'm hoping that maybe this might resolve some of it because when they do come in with this development, John's going to make sure they do certain kinds of things that help it.
Well, as part of, I mean, one of the requirements they will have is to evaluate runoff and no additional runoff can go off the property than what would normally gone off before any development occurred, whatever that is, and that's what engineers look at. So the additions of concrete and rooftops and all that will not be, will not adversely affect the condition that's there right now, which I think the residents are concerned because the condition that's there right now may not be real good regardless of whether or not this property has effect on it, but if it develops, that is part of their concern.
Correct.
And I just didn't see that area that you talk about as being a floodplain, whether it's used as a detention pond in here.
Yep. This green line is the current floodline, and you see there's housing proposed right through here.
Right.
If it cannot bring it out of the floodline, obviously all this housing has to go away.
Right.
Right. But they still have to have some kind of detention or something so that water is not released at a different rate than what it is right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions?
I have a question. Just curious, are, do you have perp tests that are required for the soil on when you have these drainage areas designed? How does that handle?
I don't think there's anything required that I'm aware of, like John, perp test. I mean, there's no set system here, which is where you typically have a perp test, so farmed.
Yeah, but I was just, in terms of the ability of the soil in the drainage area to handle the runoff, I was just curious.
That'll be John's review of their engineering plans and how much, it's kind of, I guess, black and white, how much water will the detention pond hold, and how big do they have to dig the pond?
So it's based in on the volume of the pond rather than the ability of the soil to handle it?
Correct. Is that not correct, John?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Am I satisfied? Read the title, please.
Make a motion to approve, just like she said.
Second by Commissioner O'Neil.
I have one question. When do you expect the final plan?
I haven't heard from either of the final plans at this time.
Okay. Okay. Call roll, please.
Peterson. Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Number 11, consider approval of the preliminary plat for Bryan Street Development for property located on the northwest corner of Independence and Bryan, applicant Bryan Street Development, case number S-16-08, deferred from April 7, 2008. Staff report.
This front end plat covers the PUD we just spoke of, the area that's attached march in the aerial, older aerial doesn't show the nursing home, but here is the front end plat. This large white box is where the current nursing home is located. Proposal of the streets that we spoke of earlier, right through here, private drives, private drives, and this is the one that intersects down toward Independence. It will have a median divided entryway, which we think will help the traffic in and out of that location rather than just having a small drive that came in and out, so that will work a little bit better. This is the drainage pond proposed and how they will handle the area of drainage issues. The fire department has reviewed this, and they will, again, look at it when it comes in for, not on the final plat, but the building permit plans because they were concerned about making sure they could get fire trucks in and out of that area. This driveway that actually now connects between the back drive and this front drive connects all the way through. Originally, it did not, and the fire department had a tough time making some of those turns. So the engineer redesigned that to bring that straight into it, which helps a lot with that problem. And the parking area up in here, the common parking area, has an entrance right here as well as this entrance that goes in front of the assisted living. The, sometimes, I don't know why my text does that, but it's all kind of screwed up up there. I don't know why. The private drives, although they're not public, they will have some sidewalks throughout, through the residential areas between the uses. The fire department will continue to look at those races as they come in with the development to make sure the fire trucks can make all those turns. And the divided entry was agreed upon, and we did have a lot of issues, again, with that drive between the commercial and the residential, hoping that we can make sure with some certainty that it won't turn into an alleyway. I know the developer doesn't want it to be that way either, but we just felt like the city needed a little bit more assurance, and so the text about no parking and about landscaping, trash containers that won't be seen, and can't be pulled out into the street to be picked up, those types of things, and that will be in the PUD document. Of course, the issue with the drainage that Mr. Karleke will be working on as they bring in more plans. I think those were, divided entry. I guess we've talked about about all of them. So we have one through, we have five technical considerations that dealt with all the issues that we just talked about, and I think the developer's done most of the issues that we talked about. They've already amended in their document, and as far as I know, they have many issues other than that between SOAs. It may have taken us too much to work it out, but we did. So staff recommends approval of preliminary plat, substitute the technical considerations, one through five.
Okay. What motion?
So moved, just like she said.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson. Second by Commissioner O'Neil.
I have one question. When do you expect the final plan?
I haven't heard from either of the final plans at this time.
Okay. Okay. Call roll, please.
Peterson. Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we will shift to number 18. Allow considered bids. A Rosa Street paving project kickaboot to Iown, open?
Thank you.
Shit. Thank you, sir. Oh, my goodness. It is like spring. It made the numbers grow.
Okay, item 17A is the bid opening for Rosa Street. I need to staple them in the right order, but we had two bids received for Rosa Street. The first bid opened was from, was from West Chester Development. Their bid was $551,341. The second bid opened was from Rudy Construction from Oklahoma City. Their bid was $636,120, and the budgeted amount that we have budgeted for this project is $395,000. We would ask that this item be deferred until the next meeting, we'll tabulate some bids, come back with a recommendation at the May 19 city commission meeting.
How many blocks is that?
Five.
Five blocks. Hundred thousand dollars a block, huh?
Prices are going up. Keep going up.
Motion to defer to the next meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holt. Call roll, please.
Peterson. Aye.
Collier.
Stevens.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 17B is the bid opening for Broadway Street paving project from Highland to 7th. We received two bids for this project also. First bid opened was from A-Tech Paving out of Edmond, Oklahoma. Their bid was $542,221.50. The second bid opened was from Rudy Construction Company from Oklahoma City. Their bid was $619,387.50, and the budgeted amount for this project is $495,000. And we would ask that this item be deferred also until, have time to review the bids, come back with a bid tabulation, quantities of work, and make a recommendation at the May 19 city commission meeting.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Holt.
Second.
Second by Lieutenant Stevens. Call roll, please.
Collier.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
17C is the bid opening for Rehab Asphalt Streets paving project. We received two bids on this one also. The first bid opened was from A-Tech Paving. Their bid was $1,243,092.50. The second bid opened from Rudy Construction was $1,416,195. The second bid opened from Rudy Construction was $1,416,195. And we currently got budgeted for this project $1,188,968. And we would ask that this item be deferred until we have time to review the bids, do the bid tabulations, see what the quantities are, and come back, May 19 for a recommendation.
What areas does this rehab consist of? What areas are we talking about?
There's, there was four projects listed on this one, Main Street from Kickaboo to Harrison, Airport Drive from Independence to MacArthur, Highland Street from Kickaboo to Ione, and then Kickaboo Street from around 7th to Farrell.
Well, it's obvious we can't take away any of your street money, right? I'm talking to myself.
Okay. Is it, it's broken down into, you have an idea, project by project, a dollar amount that's estimated for each of those four to make up this total?
My last PowerPoint, looking it over, that I presented to the commission on these projects when we made our initial recommendation, we did have the total estimate of the project was at $1.267 million, and we didn't have that much budgeted. But we do have it broken down, we had estimated that Airport Drive was $398,820. Main Street was $598,000. Highland Street was $152,000, and Kickaboo Street, the overlay, was $113,000. But I can break these out and give you exact numbers at the next commission meeting, and make our recommendations at that time, so you know exactly what it's going to cost.
I'd like to take this Airport Drive off of the board.
You're welcome to do that.
Because there's an awful lot of, you know, conversation about Airport Drive and other areas of Shawnee that probably need some work. So, I just, I don't know whether you make a motion or recommend or what, but I'd like to see Airport Drive from Independence to MacArthur removed from this list.
We had the discussion during our budget meetings too, and trying to get John to tell us how much longer we could put that thing off and get a little life out of it. Of course, you said it was crystallizing and we continue to break up, but...
It needs some preventive maintenance done on it, if you walk the street, and you actually can see how bad it's broken up, cracking, potholes developing, it's starting to go, it's oxidized, you see the polished aggregates on the surface. I mean, it could get by another year, but I mean...
Can you do a minor repair on it, like seal in the cracks and fill in the potholes?
Well, we'd be doing that, yeah.
Anyway.
For a lot less than $330,000.
$398.
Sounds like this is a wait a year project, at least.
So, if you can bring these back to us, divide it out by street, or at least with Airport Drive, that section divided out from this, that's probably what we're looking at, so that we can decide if we want to accept three of the streets bid instead of four of the streets bid.
Or look at all three projects together, because we're short on Rosa Street quite a bit. We could drop Airport Drive and put the money to do that.
Well, if we kick out Airport Drive, we're going to be under budget on either one of these two bids.
Like I say, we'll do the bid tab, we know what the unit prices are, we'll know what the quantities of work, we can give you a better idea exactly what each street's going to cost.
Yeah, you know what we're looking at, so bring us back some information so we can make that decision.
So, motion to defer with some direction. Is that what we're getting?
We'll bring it back.
Yes.
Okay.
The longer we wait, the higher the petroleum price is going to be, and the higher the road repair is going to be, no doubt about it.
Well, these are bids, they're locked into these unit prices now, and by the bid documents, I believe we got 60 days to work.
Okay, so we're good, done. So, next meeting. Motion? So moved. By Commissioner Holt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Peterson. Call roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, back on track here to number 12, review progress on the property located at 1316 East Fay, and consider upholding administrative order for demolition, deferred from, wasn't that 421, oh eight? It says 24.
421.
421, oh eight. That was our last meeting, okay.
Yeah.
Just, I'm over there. Don't want to miss that. Okay, staff?
I'm Mike Carson, chief building contractor for the city of Shawnee. And this item is being brought back to you, before we get into it, we have made contact with Danny Hilton, Danny Hilton and Shannon Johnson are the owner of the property. Danny, they did express to staff that they would like to go ahead and just issue a demo permit on the house and remove the house, rather than doing a remodel on that structure.
Yeah, that's pretty bad. Probably have more value rebuilding on that lot. Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Shran. Make this easy.
Second.
Moving right along. To accept.
You're not done yet. Generally, what we do is we allow 10 days to go ahead and get the permit brought back into the office,
and 30 days to have demolition complete after that permit has been issued, that way we have times on them.
And so, that's what I'd like to do, make a recommendation, is that we get the permit brought in within 10 days, and then after the permit is brought in approved, we have 30 days to go ahead and do that.
I think that's what Commissioner Shran meant.
Yeah.
Yes.
Whatever it takes.
Second?
Second.
Collier.
Second by Commissioner Holt. Other's discussion? Call roll, please.
Shran.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, number 13, presentation from the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation.
Is this Brad's airplane? Is that Brad's airplane?
He has a bigger than that. G5.
No, this is not Brad's airplane.
Parks of the state.
It's not bad, though, is it? This is one of the planes that Fred and him had refurbished, and we were able to use it for our, for sure that we did. So, they did good work. Hi, I'm Pat McCormick, I'm CEO of the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation, and as stated in our contract with the city of Shawnee, that we present our annual report of activities. I decided to lead off on our annual report to our unitholders with the Vanguard announcement. That is our biggest new industry announcement in Shawnee in 30 years. That's something to be, to feel good about and be proud about, because it's going to bring good things for Shawnee and additional new companies that will come in as a result of Vanguard. I don't know if you've been out to the industrial side or not, Wolverine Industrial Park, but I encourage you to do so. It's pretty exciting, because over the years, the Shawnee Industrial Foundation owned that piece of property since 1976. And I have shown that, that piece of property since 1990 to a lot of prospects, but in the meantime, we had used that property to, to local farmer for cattle and for wheat. If you ever taken a, I'm not a country girl, so when you take a prospect out there and the cattle would come up to meet you, and I didn't know what to do, so. Anyway, but for a long time, it was just a piece of property and has rail access, and so I knew eventually we would have good fortune and something would happen, and it did. The industrial site, it's cleared off, the road is in, they've got two pads, get ready for the third pad, the steel is out there, the buildings are ready to go up, looks like a whole different piece of property. And it looks, it's very exciting, so I encourage you everyone to go out and take a look. It's a $65 million investment into our community, it's going to have about a $7 million payroll, about 75 jobs, they're in their first year, and they've already got three frac crews already hired, and you're ready at another one. A couple of weeks ago, several others had lunch with a couple of their investors who came into Shawnee to look at the progress, and you'd be pretty impressed if you knew who some of their investors were into this company. But anyway, they're very pleased with progress, it was a cooperative effort amongst everyone, the city, Economic Development Foundation, Shawnee Industrial Authority, the county, Department of Transportation. We all worked together on this project, so we do feel very good about this project. In our annual report of activities, as stated in our contract with the city of Shawnee, the report covers different areas, it covers expansion and retention of established industries, infrastructure development and improvements to commercial and industrial areas in Shawnee, marketing and recruitment, support services, training, administrative services. One of the most important things that we can do in economic development is to take care of our existing industry, established industry is very important, that's where 80% of all your new jobs created come from, is your existing industry. And for Shawnee, a community our size, we're pretty fortunate, if you look at who we have here in Shawnee, we have about 5,000 manufacturing jobs, and they continue to grow and continue to make new investment into the community. And it's our mission to continue to assist these companies with our opportunities. On our established industries, I'll just go through some of them, Alco Cobre, the closer facility in Seminole, and we were able to get that expansion in Shawnee, and they added 11 jobs to that plant, and also additional lines are being brought into the plant right now. ExxonMobil, for the first time in many, many years, the president of ExxonMobil visited the Shawnee plant, and then the company announced a $9 million capital expansion for the plant. About five or six years ago, they did about a $50 million expansion, and it was to build one, it was to build a facility about under 2,000 square feet for, to fit in one piece of equipment, the length of a football field. So, they continue to make investments in the community. Central Plastics, George Fisher, they've made, have come to an agreement, and that company employs 450 right now. Fire Brigade is a small company that Mike Tisha, who's a retired fireman, and several others, has started this company back probably '94, but they recently have closed this company, and Jim Antox Druthouse has secured their employees. G10 Engineering is in the Barton Industrial Park. Norwestco, this company came in 1993, an interesting story about this company is that they wanted to go to Chickasha, they announced in Edmond, in the official announcement in Edmond, and turned dirt in Shawnee. So, you never know how it's going to happen. TDK Furts Corporation, they've announced a $9 million investment into the Shawnee plant over the next three years, the company currently employs about 250. We've been working with TDK, ExxonMobil, Shawnee Milling Company, Norwestco, and several other companies regarding the rail issues and transportation issues that they've had. Unit Liner Company, Palm Pro, they've gone from a 30,000 square feet facility up to 90,000 square feet facility, they continue to grow and expand, right now they have 80 jobs. And we worked with representative Chris Steele on designated Shawnee as Water Garden Capital of Oklahoma, and they are the largest supplier in the nation in water garden products. Wolverine Two has a new plant manager, they continue to bring a new product line and new investment into the community. Right now, they currently employ 535, and they are a major supplier of fin tubing for carrier, york, and train. Wood Group Pressure Controls, four years ago, I came to the city commission and asked if the city would run water and sort of this company, they've been on lagoon and well, and needed to grow and expand. And the only way that they could is with additional of infrastructure to their facility, and with that being done, they've, have invested over 7.5 million in its building and new equipment and 50,000 square foot expansion, and they currently employ 175 people, so they've doubled their workforce based on that infrastructure investment. Second Fox Food Distribution Center in our industrial park is narrowly completed. Oklahoma Jet Works, experienced financial faculty had to close their facility. We did a reverse impact analysis this last year on a company, they don't, we don't do those very often, normally you do impact analysis, but it's on the positive side. So, what would it mean to a community to do a reverse impact analysis, show what the loss would be to a community, not only in jobs and payroll, but also it represented what it would do across the state to vendors and suppliers in the area. It's an eye opener, experience to see that. On a proposal submitted, these are just several other proposals that we submitted, Shawnee's fortunate that we can be a little bit more selective on what we do a proposal for. We get lots of proposals from the Department of Commerce, they work with a lot of site consultants, and the main thing that you end up with is, it comes down to incentives, what are you willing to give me to come? We, Project CMT, they, they're still looking for a location, Project Bass is, I submitted Wolverine Industrial Park, and, but it did not come here, it went to another community. Other projects that we have worked on, that the city commission is probably pretty familiar with, is Acorn Growth Group, Oklahoma Jet Works, I don't know how many meetings that we had on that process, but it was pretty lengthy. Benton Racing was another one that we met several times on, that was going to locate in a north airport property on 262 acres that the city actually owns, and foundation has a long-term sublease on that property from the city. We worked with that, how many meetings did we have on that, Jim and the mayor, I don't know how many, several, several. And the Wayland Vanguard, just to give you a recap, I included that in the, into the annual report also. Industrial sites, the Shawnee Industrial Park, we're down to 8.14 acres in the Shawnee Industrial Park. We had about 25 acres about four years ago, so we've moved quite a bit of industrial land. Cozel Property and the McGuire Property is adjacent, sits between ExxonMobil and the Shawnee Industrial Park, those two 80 acres there. And the Bodard Business Industrial Park has 100-plus acres off of 45th Street. Then we have the Shawnee Municipal Air Park, that has 80 acres, more or less. The foundation is very committed to the Shawnee Regional Airport, to do whatever we can to help the growth and to promote that airport. We've been involved with the foreign trade zone, and that application I think will be presented on the 21st of May. Foundation has agreed, did last year, to pay for the application fees, $2,000, and Matt Weaver came down a couple of months ago, did a presentation to the commission on the foreign trade zone, on how important that is. Also, the foundation has approved $50,000 to be used to refurbish the hangar number one at the airport room when it's ready to go. Also, during that period of time, the Oklahoma Aerospace Summit will be June the 23rd and 24th, and we already have the booth space again available to do. Industrial properties, it's just the TDK Corporation, the 65,000 square foot building, and Shawnee Bolling and Unit Liner property that we have available. Now, on the commercial retail side, we work with quite a few site locators and consultants, and one of them has been a hotel, a new hotel property, we get a lot of requests and demographics on hotel properties. The Buckston Group came and did a presentation to the city commission, support that project. Special Projects Committee is made up of several board members and county commissioners, and Charlie Laster and Terry West, several others, that have met with Phil Tomlinson and Big Bird at the Aeronautics Commission to discuss projects, infrastructure to support our airport. Familiarization tour, thanks to the mayor, he encouraged us to do that, and that was very successful, I think we got a lot of good feedback from that mayor, and thanks for encouraging us to do that, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And our strategic planning session was held on December the 5th, Dr. Leo Presley facilitated the session and provided a summary of the data. And other, just other events that we have participated in, the World Trade Conference, Aerospace Summit, and the Golf and Striper Fish Tournament, it'll be again June the 4th, 5th, and 6th. I encourage everyone to come and participate in that, it's a good opportunity. And then, also, we hosted a reception and dinner for the Citizens of Wyoming Nation, at the Citizens of Wyoming Nation Cultural Heritage Center, along with Qingqing City, China. And that was an interesting experience, I enjoyed it that day, it was cultural, but it was very interesting, enjoyed it. And then the rest of the activities the administration has been involved in. Also, we have a list of our 2007 board of trustees, and we've included that, just to see who some of our board members are. And then, an additional thing that I, just for your information, it's just, as far as the report goes, is several of my counterparts, we do a lot of surveys with each other and supply in information, so we share information, and it's just for you to review at your time, if you've got any questions, feel free to get, contact me, and I'll be happy to visit with you about it. And also, the new... And also, the new, it is an updated brochure that we do do for the airport that the foundation has been. And it has a lot of highlights about the airport you might not know. So this is what we do also.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm Marion McMillan, the current chairman of the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation. I just wanted to add some comments to those that Pat has already made, might mention tonight, that I'm joined in the audience with a couple of members of the executive committee of the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation, including George Hand with Canadian Valley Electric, and Randy Smith with OBU. Again, I'd like to, just, I want to take a lot of your time, because I know you're busy, just wanted to again thank the commission for your past support for economic development activities in our community. In addition to the support that you've given the foundation in the form of annual budget allocation, you've also been very forthcoming at times. I can think of one example, in the past, where we had the industrial access road that went through the Shawnee Industrial Park, and we had made an application for industrial access road. Through the Department of Transportation, you all were forthcoming in adding additional funding to that for matching fund that we needed to do that. I also think you've made some excellent investments in the form of the, with Oklahoma State University in providing the tools of the economic impact studies. I think that's been very helpful. It was particularly helpful with the Vanguard transaction that provided in real terms the economic impact of having that, that business located in our community. Just in regard to the Vanguard's stimulation services project, of course, you know, that impact study I already mentioned, I also think that there was unprecedented cooperation for funding, not only coming from the city, but also the county, the Shawnee Industrial Authority, the Department of Oklahoma, Oklahoma Department of Transportation, as well as the SEDF in providing that $650,000 required for the infrastructure to make that happen, to bring not only industrial access road, but as well as sewer and water to that facility. And I am, would have to say that I'm also especially pleased that the Potawatomi County Commissioners and the Potawatomi County Sales Overtakers, Sales Tax Oversight Committee was also very engaging and got involved in this project and added their support to match what the city had contributed to that. So I think that was, that was very precedent-setting, hopefully, for other projects that might happen in the future. I go on to say that the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation, our mission, Pat mentioned that we had a planning session again in December, and we remain focused on the fact that we are looking at expanding the economic base of the greater Shawnee area in order to enhance earning opportunities for our residents by retaining and expanding businesses and industry, as well as attracting new desirable employers to the community that are consistent with our need and request for high quality of life. Our recent planning sessions, again, pinpointed that aviation is a very attractive industry that we'd like to bring more to the city, because that will allow us to leverage the proximity that we have to Tinker Airfield, and everything that's going on there, as well as the facility we have with Shawnee Municipal Airport, as well as the coordination and tie-in with workforce development that Gordon Cooper is offering with their aviation technology services. So we think those make a nice tie-in and allows us all to work together in a cooperative effort to expand that base. Also, I want to thank that, given the demands for city services, and you guys are dealing with that all the time, that anything we can do to expand the Shawnee's retail base and the corresponding expansions of retail sales tax, obviously adds additional revenues to the budget for the city, and hopefully that will allow you to make additional improvements in the, in the community. But we think that's a high priority. Infrastructure improvements that also are needed to entice existing industry to expand, as well as attract new business to the community, and I might just go ahead and mention, it's been talked about before, rail service to our community. Skipping over a little ways, one of the things that we might mention, that 100 years ago at this time, the business and governmental leaders in this community were very much focused on bringing railroads to this community. Dr. Bob Barnard has made several presentations, the local service clubs, many of you I'm sure have heard that, but it is interesting how the focus of that particular effort at that time, knowing that to fail to secure rail service would have had a very severe negative impact on, on the Shawnee community, and we'd only have to look in other communities within Potawatomi County to see the impact if we had not been successful in getting a railroad. Of course, at that time, we ended up with three at one particular time. But today, rail service to Shawnee, while it's still in existence, is frankly in very poor condition. The track itself, as well as the rail bed, are threatened at times by flooding of the river, and then frankly, just lack of maintenance because of the low amount of traffic that's in, being used. Last summer, you should point out that there was a 90-day period of time that the rail service was out of business because of flooding. There was efforts made in order to replace the rail bed, but you should know the impact of that while it was out. Currently has moved to another operation within ExxonMobil, but Richard Coggins told us that during that 90-day timeframe that rail service was out, immediately, because they use rail service to bring in obviously the resin pellets they use in making all their plastic film products out there, that they incurred approximately $400,000 in additional freight cost for that 90-day period of time, just to bring their needed feedstocks in by truck as opposed to rail. He also told us that just the, they immediately switched to a situation where they were spotting rail cars loaded with their, their resin pellets over in the Oklahoma City area, and they were offloading, transloading those on to semi-transports and then bringing to this community. But obviously, they had to gear up quickly and get that done. Fortunately, they had some stock already in hand at their, at their facility here, but without that, basically said they would got into a situation, they would have to shut down and go to limited hours. TDK also has the same similar situation. They bring in iron oxide from the west coast, that is brought in all the way and to the Shawnee facility. They likewise immediately switched to a transloading operation where they spotted cars on the city, in the rail yards there, then transported it off on to trucks and brought it over to Shawnee. The managers out there told me that if that outage had gone on very much longer, they would have to definitely go to shorter hours and shorter workdays, because just the sheer lack of being able to physically get the feedstocks into those plants, let alone just the, just the additional cost of freight transportation. And I only bring that out because in past report, I think you heard in several instances where ExxonMobil, as well as, of course Vanguard, are two industries, of course, ExxonMobil first, they have continued over a period of years to make additional investments in that plant. And they have currently, I believe, 535 employees or something like that. The fact that they are making those additional investments, I think, shows that they believe Shawnee is a good place to develop additional services and produce additional product, because we have workforce as well as facility to handle that. But I shudder to think that if we get to a situation that it becomes a fact that because of, of problems with our rail service, that they would make a corporate decision to, ah, we're going to scratch Shawnee off that list, and we're not going to make any additional investments. While it may not be an additional, or an early threat to these plants, in fact, for long-term, just like any of our businesses, we've got to continue to make additional improvements and investment in our facilities. And the fact that those might be reserved because they couldn't get rail service here, I think, would have a real detrimental fit. I'm saying all that just to relate to the fact that one of the challenges that the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation has taken up this year, and it started on January 4th, Pat assisted in putting together a railroad subcommittee of the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation. That group is headed up by Bill Ford. And all the current shippers or users of the rail service, which include Ball Pipe and Supply, Shawnee Milling, Norwestco, TDK, ExxonMobil, and of course now Vanguard, have been very actively involved in that particular activity. Representative Chris Steele, Charlie Laster, have likewise been very engaged and understand what our problem is, and we're working to figure out ways that we can enhance the viability of that railroad by first of all, improving the track bed, and also figuring out how to make this more economic viable. So that again is one of the activities the Economic Development Foundation is working on kind of behind the scenes to make sure that, just like 100 years ago, railroads were important, they're still important today, and we need to keep those, those facilities As far as our action plan, I just wanted to also talk just a little bit about that we believe, and through our planning process, we believe that it's necessary that we expand our capabilities. And we've looked at our business model and to accomplish these objectives, we've asked, we've talked to you previously, going back into the January, February timeframe, I think when you first started your budget process, asking you for additional funding. We know you as commissioners are, are faced with a lot of requests, you have finite resources, and you look, of course, to, to deploy those resources to the best of your ability. I would say that in, in support of what the Economic Development Foundation is trying to do, it's very much like if you're planting a garden in spring, is you have to actually till the ground, you then go in and plant the crop, fertilize it, you take care of it, all those types of things, bearing a crop and hopefully down the road. That's very much having to have the long-term vision that additional investments made in economic development will allow us to come forward, hopefully, and bring additional activity to the community, which will in turn increase sales tax revenues, to therefore you to spend on those various services and infrastructure that the community needs. So like I said, we have been involved in doing preliminary steps in order to this process. We've been involved over the last several months, meeting our bylaws in order to make that match with our, our business plan. We've changed our fiscal year so it matches your fiscal year, which makes it easier for planning on both of us. We've also realized that we believe we need to expand our staff. That's the primary reason why we're asking for additional funding. Currently been operating a one-person shop. We intend to go to a three-person shop, not immediately, but the step process would be to hire an executive director and then expand the staff as we need to going forward. Like I said, we had earlier asked that you look at increasing our annual funding contract from $100,000 to $196,000. And we've also made the commitment that the private sector will also be brought to bear and add additional funds into this project. You should know that since 1958, when the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation was founded, there's been $850,000 in private money that's been invested in economic development activities. So it has been a situation that both private and public dollars utilized for these activities. Our board has established a base goal this, for our campaign that we're going to put together, and have already launched that, of a base goal of $480,000 and a challenge goal of $600,000 that we would hope to raise, and having that being the form of pledges over a five-year period of time. I'm pleased to report that we have launched that campaign only with our board members, and to date, we have received pledges totaling about $60,000. And beginning with our May 14th board meeting, we will then carry that, that campaign up across the business community. And we believe we have a good story to tell, and we're actively looking forward to talking to the private sector and likewise, having hopefully the business community respond to our challenges and leadership that the board is providing. I also would just go on, because I know that's another piece of your, your budgeting process, you have plans in your budget to complete a retail study, and I would just say that in our view, and our board has discussed that on numerous occasions, we feel like the success of a retail study will not be measured by the thickness of that report, but by the application of its conclusions. And it's our intent, the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation, along with what I previously talked about on our staffing, and that we're working on, we very much support that you perceive of that retail study, because we think there are certainly niches in our, in our community that are either underserved or not being served, and hopefully by rounding those out, we will likewise see your sales tax revenues increase, and therefore more funds for you all to provide services for our community. So all of that said, we're here tonight, not only just to make our annual report, but also stand ready, and along with other members of the, of the committee that are here, the executive committee, to answer any questions you have, and again, ask for you for that support and to leave those funds in your budget as you currently plan to do. So with that, I would answer any questions. Pat, George, and Randy would also be available to answer any questions you may have.
I think you've got a chart back here that speaks volumes, right behind the trustees, that is a comparison of economic development organizations, organizations in Oklahoma. Twelve of these, I mean, other 11, I guess there's 12 total peers of us, and it ranges, of course, from staff that really, from, really averages two to three, as much as seven. The dollar figures are clear. I mean, we're at 100,000, I don't know, we're at 139, I guess that's something else. Anyway, 100,000, I know it goes to you guys, but you know, you've got Ponca City at 1.8 million, of course Ardmore at 4.5 million, that's not even fair. Duncan, 570, those are just a few. Guyman, 464. You know, it's, we're, again, we're dealing, I'll say it again, kind of in chump change with the economic development world and trying to compete against other communities to bring quality jobs to our community, to allow that quality of life for our citizens an opportunity, maybe to keep our kids here with good-paying jobs, and instead of driving to Oklahoma City or somewhere else. But I think that's an important chart. Of course, there's some good, other good information that Pat's provided in here as well, that you got from the governor's team, I think, right? That provides the detail on the increase in sales tax dollars that has slowly moved along and, and helped us somewhat, but we'd like to accelerate that with better information. It's just like our city manager here, Jim Collard, when he went out and championed the physical impact study, or tool that we have, and the CGE that allows us to make better decisions. The retail study, I believe, would do the same thing, allow us to make better decisions in going out and accumulating or attracting the right kind of retail here that would maximize the potential dollars that go back into the community. So appreciate what you've done. And the unit drive, I'm looking forward to that as well. It's been a while, how long? Five years at least? And I think we've got a story to sell now, and that people will be excited to help Shawnee grow and step up and be a part of it. So you've got a great board and great leadership, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Like I said, we're likewise excited. We think we have a good story to tell, and it does require, you know, a little bit of leap of faith on, on both parts. Obviously, you folks are, are, by statute required, you can only put a budget together one year at a time, obviously. We're looking at trying to put a budget together that really stretches out for a number of years, and go out and attract, you know, a high-quality individual to be involved in this process. Likewise, we believe it's, you know, to maximize the participation of the private sector to go out and ask for funding that would in fact come over a five-year period of time, gives us the stability that we need. And we likewise will, you know, in future years, be coming back to the city commission just as we have now, in order to make an annual report. But we realize and we're willing to take that challenge, that we have to in fact prove to you and to come back and provide concrete results that we are using your money effectively. And that's, that's basically, you know, what I'm here to tell you, is that our board, I think, is very dedicated to this process. We'll just have to let, you know, it take its course, but I think our board is certainly ready and very willing to step forward and challenge.
Well, nothing happens by accident, and you know as well as I that preparation, that success is really preparation, meeting opportunity. And we need to be proactive and be prepared and organized in order to move forward. I mean, we are located here on I-4, that's an advantage for us, but things don't happen just automatically. I mean, you actually have to work for things. There's no easy button out there that we all realize now, that there's no such thing. Staples made some money out of it, but no one else has. So other questions for Marion?
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marion. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you for that presentation. Number 14, another presentation of suggested revisions to the city ordinances related to the twin lakes and their contiguous lands.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The new Shawnee Police Department Lake Patrol Unit, and myself conducted a comprehensive review of 60 ordinances to deal, that deal with the Shawnee Twin Lakes and lands. And out of the 60, we have 23 or thereabouts that we're making recommendations, some of them small, some of them larger, increase of of them small, some of them larger, increase of fees. And what I had done was to put all of those into tonight's agenda packet so that you had the chance to review those and look and see what kind of recommendations that we were making with the cross-out of current ordinance and then the additions that we were recommending. This hasn't been done, these, all these ordinances have been in place since 1986. And as we're taking a look at everything that we're responsible for enforcing, felt that it was necessary to take a close look at this and make some recommendations. And basically what I'm looking for tonight is how you would like to proceed in doing this. I have a recommendation how we can proceed, but you may have some other direction for me as we try to make adjustments to these ordinances.
Well, we definitely don't have to listen to all 61 of them, do we?
No, you do not. And the reason why all 60 are included in there, there might be something in the ones that you don't see any corrections that you think is maybe necessary to address.
What's your suggestion?
My suggestion is that beginning at the next commission meeting is that we would, I would go ahead and have everything prepared as to those approximately, like I say, 23 ordinance, I believe that's the right number, and to put those into the agenda and would start going through those. And then when you're tired of it, we could table the rest to the next, to the next meeting. But there's some of them that could be addressed fairly quickly with the review. There's just some wording changes on some of them and then some of them are a little bit more in-depth. We might have some more discussion and try to knock out as many as we can. My goal was to try to get this in place for the summer activities, but we're there. So, you know, better late than never.
I know you have, we probably all got the same email from Linda AG from the Lake Association. I'm wondering if there couldn't be a submission to one of their meetings where there could be some discussion or make it available to their group? Is that?
Well, I've already done that.
Have you?
We had a, we had a, we brought this up on October the 16th. We've been working on this on and off since that time. And we, a lot of their suggestions were incorporated into the recommendations from my office. I did furnish this information here to Linda just the other day where there's a couple other recommendations and I reviewed that with the Lake Patrol staff and we would be incorporating a couple of their suggestions that I just received, so.
So you'll give us a fresh set based on that?
Right. You'll get, you'll get only what the ordinances that I'm recommending that we changed. So you're not going to get all 60 again. You're only going to get the ones that are going to need changes with all that incorporated.
Would we, do we have the originals with the strikeout and with some kind of bowl or, you know, with the changes or talics or whatever?
I can see to it that you get that so you can see along with the clean ordinance that'll be in there that should you accept it, it'll be ready to be approved.
So we have comparisons.
This is nice. Yeah, that's a good plan.
That sounds good. And then we'll go as far as we can and then what we don't get to, we can table to the next one.
Perfect.
When Wayne starts grimacing, it'll be time.
Correct.
As long as it doesn't take over 15 minutes, we're fine.
Well, and some of it may just be releasing.
Right. They're going to be very easy, right. We're just some word, you know, we had Lake Ranger and we're changing it to Chief of Police or designee. So it's, some of them are just little things like that. And then we've taken a look at some of our fees that we're charging, which aren't where they should be. We've taken some comparisons of other lakes and we need to increase some of our fees. And we're trying to streamline the process where there's been a license, let's say a fishing license for, you know, being on the shore, being out in the boat, or being in waiters. So we're just trying to streamline the whole process to make things easier.
So this is going to be over two or three meetings, I'm assuming?
It depends on what your pleasure is here, how far we're able to go. So we'll see, I guess, the next meeting, I'll have everything on the agenda and then whatever we don't get to, we'll move it to the next meeting.
What was that?
One or two.
Not two or three.
Not two or three.
Right.
I really think there's probably going to be about 10 that should be pretty fast.
Okay.
Good.
All right, very good. Thank you. Number 15, update on solid waste disposal service from Tony Gray.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's see, Steve.
Put your microphone down a little bit. There we go.
Thank you. I'm always grateful to you for that.
That's right. There you go. Back at you.
Okay, a few weeks ago, Vice Mayor Stevens asked me to prepare a trash service update. And it's very timely because we just finished our spring cleanup. So I'll do a little review and then go through what we've got. On June 4th, 2007, the city commission voted to begin using polycarts for trash disposal citywide. And the city currently has a five-year renewable contract with Allied Waste, which is formerly BFI, to service our customers. That contract date began July 1st, 2006. And right now, we service between 9,000 and 10,000 customers at any time. So basically, that's average households per day, 2,250. That does not include our yard waste pickup day. And complaints that are turned into the city, not allied, we average 2.73. And this is just a graph. Really, it shows where the, where we started the inception of the polycart service, where you see the huge spike there. And then it kind of levels off and you just see that it's continually kind of going down. The most complaints we've had since the inception of service, I think, is 10, no more than, we've had like eight on three separate occasions.
Except per day?
Yes, on certain days. And I'm going to break those down for you. I'm sorry you can't see that. I should have made that larger. I could see it fine when I did it. The household complaints, that would just be regular household pickup trash, since August 1st, which is when the polycarts began, is 199. Yard waste complaints, 24. No polycart delivered or late delivery, 214. Complaints from handicap residents, 20. Customer service, which would include rude phone service drivers, trash men spilling trash, any gamut of things, would be 34, for a total of 491. The majority of our complaints are still from new services who don't receive polycarts in a timely manner. And we still get some complaints that one side of the street is not, is picked up and the other side is not. And particularly the ones that came to my mind were Center and Draper. Complaints have reached no more than eight on any given day since the last update. And these complaints, when they're high like that, are typically during bad weather. On our last update to you as a commission, you requested that Allied hit us someone in Shawnee to answer the phones and that has happened. And we do encourage people to call Allied first and us second because that really helps the flow of information and service. Just thought I'd show you a few pictures. We have 85 pictures, but I only brought six, so. This is obviously not within our contract guidelines. This person needed to take through excess trash either to the landfill or to utilize our cleanup day. This one here is probably not an active service based on the for-sale sign and probably not a paying account, so therefore was not picked up and was not in a polycart. Here we have a car blocking and we have a lot of that on certain days for some reason. Also, they have more trash than will fit in their cart. This one, you can't get the arms of the automated service to the carts. And also, those are not allied carts, they're from WCA and they won't pick up other people's This one, they did a really good job. The polycart is placed perfectly, just great for the trash truck to come by and pick it up. However, there's a little problem with the bags of trash. Those are not yard waste. You can tell usually by the way it's, the bag is shaped or even just looking at what's inside one of the bags. This was one that I was kind of impressed with because I was watching this particular yard. And that pile of limbs came out after our spring cleanup deadline, but then after cleanup day, it was gone. So they did utilize cleanup day. So Shawnee has gone from many yards looking like this to many looking like this in most of the city. And that brings me to our annual fall and spring cleanup that I'd like to update you on. I was so proud of our staff on this particular day. Greg Price really stepped up and arranged most of it. And the airport did a great job, Rex Henon, and just all the staff that went out there and worked it on our side, just, they do a great job. We have good staff. So the spring cleanup is part of our contract with Allied and no additional fee is charged to the city of Shawnee on that. That's paid through the residents on their regular bills in what their contract.
Part of the fee.
During spring cleanup, people take their refuse to specific drop-off locations and it's for residents only. And that's why we ask for a water bill that shows where they paid trash service. We don't want, you know, businesses bringing it in or that don't pay residential trash service or people from the county. Then in the fall, we have a cleanup that's optional to the city. The city of Shawnee is charged by the ton during that cleanup. So we really do like it when people use spring cleanup. The location of the fall cleanup is at the residential curbside. This spring cleanup day was well advertised. We had flyers go out in water bills on the website. We advertised in the newspaper, put it on local television and local radio. And just trash per ton, you can kind of tell that it's gone up. This year, we had 247 tons hauled away of just regular refuse. In 2007, we had 157 tons and 155 tons in 2006. And that's probably a combination of several factors. One was we had the spring garage sale, which people had all their stuff gathered up. Another was it was our first year of polycarts, so people are taking more responsibility for their own trash. So I'm thinking those are probably some of the things that contributed to that. And it was good weather. We got rid of 420 tires this year. Last year was 403, year before that, 210. Oil, we actually collected less oil this year, 325 gallons, as opposed to 693 gallons last year. And I believe that's because we have, one, oil prices have gone up and people probably aren't changing their oil as much. But I think that it's probably because it's easier to dispose of really. You can take it to AutoZone, you can take it anywhere and get it disposed of. Scrap metal, we got rid of 165 yards as opposed to 210 yards last year. And this year, we offered a way for people to get rid of their old computers, printers, and we got rid of one ton of e-waste. And Go Computers and Sustainable Shawnee really stepped up and helped us with that. This year, we increased services, decreased costs to the city by utilizing less employees. And we increased those services and decreased the cost by some creative thinking and community partnerships. Tenage was up and city labor costs were down. The city had three locations where citizens could take their trash, plus the landfill. In 2006 and '07, we utilized four locations plus the landfill. The city furnished three employees at two locations, two employees at another location. That's four employees, city employees less than we utilized in the past. Allied Waste furnished six employees at two locations and nine employees at another location and four employees at the landfill. Ball Pipe and Supply provided scrap metal bins and employees. This was provided at no charge to the city. ORI Recovery took care of the used oil and antifreeze. This was free to the city. In the past, we have paid for that service. Go Computers and Sustainable Shawnee handled the e-waste. Allied did offer a bin for e-waste, but we handled it more locally. Bristow Rubber Recycling took care of the used tires and this was also at no charge to the city. Allied provided wood chips from the ice storm to, free of charge to the residents. And that's something we've not offered in the past. Three community service workers were utilized. That cost the city nothing. Allied Waste hired 10 temporary workers to assist in the 2008 spring cleanup and that put a little bit of money back into our economy. So the city of Shawnee, we'll continue to collaborate with various organizations, try to be creative during the spring cleanup. I think the yard, the yard sale went great. It helped with our spring cleanup. And we'll have a curbside waste pickup in the fall. I do have allied representatives here to help answer any questions. If you have any questions with me at current trash service.
Are we going to expand the landfill hours like we did last summer?
Yes.
Starting in the winter?
Starting Memorial Day.
Okay.
It will be open every Saturday.
Every Saturday?
And that's half a day, I believe.
Okay.
Every Saturday, half a day.
And we're, we had some discussions about adding another recycling area and this one seems to be kind of overfilled sometimes. That's one of the big complaints I get.
Mondays are very, very, they're very full because everybody takes the recycling and it seems like on the weekends. We do work with Allied on getting that out as quickly as possible. And Alaska Lovelace has really tried to step up. She's giving me, she's doing two pickups per week now, just without even being called or asked. So that's a change from the previous few months.
How long has that been going on? Two pickups a week?
Uh, not very long, probably about three weeks. We've been looking at our recycle contract very closely here lately.
Okay. It's been emptier recently. It hasn't been the problem that it was a month or two ago. Yeah.
We do have a problem with people not utilizing the bins.
Not putting it all the way into the bin.
Just throwing it over the fence.
Yes.
You know, not going in and checking to see if the bin is full.
Yeah.
And we do have a trash, a problem with people dumping their trash in there occasionally.
Let's do a plug for some of the schools around here. Some of the schools are recycling paper. Will Rogers Grove, you can take your paper there and the money gets used for playground things. So just my plug for Will Rogers and Grove.
Yeah, and they're looking at expanding that to the other schools. So that's a really good thing. So take your, please take your recycled paper to our schools.
Absolutely. It benefits our kids.
Where's the other recycling? Where are you going to have the other recycling?
That did not make it through our budget process. Our SMA is too tight. The budget for Shawnee Municipal Authority is too tight. And all of our trash service comes through the SMA. So it does not look like we'll be getting another recycle site, but I think we can do some creative thinking and get something done.
Well, maybe when we get the health of the SMA up by it carrying itself, maybe we'll be able to do that. That's something we're going to talk about soon.
Right. That would be really nice to have another recycle site, you know?
If we can't do that, can we help advertise some of the other places that do take recyclable products because that may take some of the burden off?
Right.
They are in different locations in town. That was, you know, that was one of the points about having a separate recycle drop-off point was the variation in locations and then just the volume. And because some other schools or businesses have offered that, I mean, I don't know. Maybe we could work with that and start to advertise that because.
And we do a little bit on Channel 30, but I could also do a flyer for the water bills.
And even if you just put it on the website, a lot of people, you know, if you go to like Earth 911 and you put in our zip code, a couple of the places come up. But if we had on our website everywhere that you can go to recycle, like you can take plastic to these locations.
And I believe we do on our, when you go to the sanitation website page. And I probably need to add the Abbottibby sites to that.
Other, yeah. Other locations, not just hours.
I do, I've got everything from eyeglasses to hangers to, I mean, I just have a large list that I've compiled.
Okay.
And I've even put it in the paper before, but it's probably time for me to put it in the paper again.
I know that the Super Clean Dry Clean Center out on North Kickapoo will accept hangers that they clean and reuse. So if you've got those, take them out there. Again, those are things that need to be listed that you may not be aware of.
And I didn't know about, about Super Clean, but I just put on hangers, ask your dry cleaner.
Actually, Shelby will kill me over this. If you take your own personal hangers, he'll use those to keep from using wire hangers.
I'm sure Finley will do that as well and Pierce and the others, if you were to ask him, you're right.
Okay, this number that you say you call, don't call, so the citizens don't call the city of Shawnee about any complaints.
Not until you.
Wait, wait. The number that you call, is that number talking to a person or talking to a machine?
It's talking to the person.
Okay. And how soon do you get action from that?
Alaska, would you like to come on up?
I didn't hear your question.
I said, how soon? I said, how soon, thank you. How soon do you get reaction from your complaints?
Immediately.
Immediately. And what you call immediately?
You call, what's your complaint or issue, and we take care of it immediately.
But I'm asking, what do you call immediately?
I mean, is it within 24 hours or is it?
If you call on a complaint, for example, it's miss service, we dispatch the driver to take care of it the same day. Can you explain to them, you know, what a nod out is and how the law goes? You know, whether someone's coming out of a car or not. A nod out, what we consider a nod out is, for example...
Could you speak closer to the mic, please?
Can you hear me? Is that better? We consider a nod out, a car parked in front of a polycart, a customer didn't have their trash out at all. I'm thinking. Just any reason they couldn't get to the trash? Yeah, we couldn't get to the trash. It's coded in its law. As of May 1st, we had over 6,000 nod outs.
That's a lot.
Is there any other information that you keep track of as you go through? I mean, any other, trying to think of any other reason that they would not have picked up inappropriate trash that's out there? I mean, do you get calls because you didn't pick up my couch?
That is, that is another, we do. It is also called, it's coded as a nod out.
A nod out, okay.
And it's excess trash.
Okay.
Like I said, blocked by a car.
Okay, okay.
When do the podcasts need to be out in the morning?
By 7:00 AM.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
For the update, appreciate it. Sure everyone appreciates it. Okay, number 16, consider reducing the tap fee for the First Church of God.
This item, on page 200 of your packet, I prepared a memo. And then on page 201 through 205 or 207 is some ordinances dealing with the Granada Water Line, the improvement district over on the east side of town. Couple of years ago, the subdivisions over on that side of town, their wells were drying up. So in order to extend water lines to the area, they formed an assessment district. We prepared the plans and provided construction administration inspection. But after the line was put in, the actual cost retaliated. And then 100% of the construction cost was assessed back to 137 property owners or lot holders as we determined the district. And as such, the assessment came out to be about $4,138 per person, per property within the assessment district. But the city also passed an ordinance coming up with the kind of a matrix, a tap fee schedule for people that were outside or property owners that were outside the original assessment district. And on page 202 shows that tap schedule. Now, the, I believe the intent of the tap schedule was to charge property owners and homeowners wanting to build houses or make initial taps at a certain fee. But then the fee jumped up from like a four-inch line to a six-inch line and drastically increased. And I believe the intent for that was to, for developers, for like, instance, a six-inch line or an eight-inch line, a developer owns a property out there, taps that Granada Water Line, so to speak. Then they can run that line in, platter area, subdivide it, create 10, 15, or 20 more lots. So that's why the tap fee for outside the assessment district jumped up so drastically. And I believe it even says that on the tap schedule or in the table. There's a sentence there that says the break between the four-inch and the six-inch tap size is a development fee. Now, having said all that, we have an entity come in to want to develop, build a church out there on the east side of Bryant Street, south of MacArthur. Single ownership entity wanting to build a facility. They present plans, then we review them for drainage and building codes and everything else. And they're required to set a fire hydrant. And they're also required to run a six-inch fire line to sprinkle their building. So we're saying, hey, you have to do this in order to get a building permit. We go back and look at this table, oh, oh, by the way, you have to pay a tap fee of $20,606. I don't believe that was the intent of what the matrix was trying to do. And I just wanted to let y'all know. And my view is we probably should reduce that. And I point out, too, that this tap fee does not go to the SMA. It wasn't set up for that. It was set up to retire the assessment cost to the 137 stakeholders to be divided up amongst them, so to speak, at the end of the term. So having said all that, we believe the intent was to, for developers, that's why it drastically jumped so much. We're requiring the church, and I'm not a member of the church, by the way. I don't have any affiliation whatsoever with it. But out of fairness and what I believe would be to charge them a four-inch tap at the rate of $6,542 instead of that drastic development cost of $20,606. I might point out that we've never charged anyone such a fee before, the $20,000. We've had Wal-Mart come in, other entities, you know, they only had to pay the $150 tap fee, so.
Don't go there.
It just seems exorbitant, especially when we're telling them that, hey, you have to tap the line to run a fire line and a fire hydrant. So that's my spiel.
I can speak with some detail. That is my neighborhood. And it was more than just a couple of years ago. It was actually, I don't know, almost six years ago. And I know that when we developed this thing, that we had in mind a couple of areas for development. One of them was further east on MacArthur, before you get to Brangus. There's an area there that's actually kind of been cleared out and some thoughts of development was going to occur there. Because you would be able to take this six-inch line and divide it over 20, 20 different lots or whatever, pretty good-sized lots. There was another one a little bit further down Brangus and then further back into Cedar Creek in that area. That's pretty well developed. But mainly, right there along MacArthur was a lot of development opportunity. Most of the lots in Granada and Tanglewood are single lots typically. And I agree, I mean, I'd love to see all of that debt retired a little sooner or maybe those payments go down a little bit. But I don't see that happening, frankly. I figure that, you know, you're going to make this payment for 10 years or whatever, if that's what you're doing. Some people paid it right up front. I chose to do the annual assessment and have done that now, except for almost six years, I guess. This will be six coming up. And, you know, as far as the intent, this being a single entity, I have to agree. And I will abstain on this vote, but I have some detail and interest in it. And I think it's only right that, and I'm not a member of the church either. I think it's only right that we stay with the original intent. It's kind of like what we talked about originally with sidewalks and things like that. You know, our intent wasn't that when someone added onto their house that we were going to make them put a sidewalk out in front. You know, it's really for new development. And it was good to have that discussion when it finally got right down to it, where we were going to put a sidewalk or not. And we're going to talk about that again here soon, I'm sure. Because we've had our little committee meeting and maybe we'll have another one. But the original intent here, again, I think, was for a development so you could divide that out over multiple property owners.
That was my recollection, too. That's why I was bringing this up.
I have a question. I'm curious as to what tap fee charges, what does the owner, contractor, developer, what services do they receive from the city? What is the city's part? You just give them a permit, you give them a tap fee, and that's it? Take their money and they're gone?
Yes, on this one, definitely, we, the water department does not make taps six inches in size. They would have to hire a contractor from Oklahoma City to come in and actually make the tap, physically tap it.
Are there other communities that actually make the tap or dig it out or whatever?
I'm sure there probably is, yes.
Why don't we do that? For $6,000, we can't dig a hole?
That's not, that, no, this, this, this schedule here was developed to recoup the actual cost.
I understand. I know when we talked about it last year, a year and a half ago. Well, like you say, Walmart's paying $150 and the Church of God's paying $6,000 if we approve this. But we had to recoup. There were losses involved at the time, right?
Now, this is, our property owners are paying for this. Again, we're all paying $4,000 something while Walmart paid $150.
Right.
We all paid $4,000 or so to have the water lines run and so forth. So this is really, in that area, is the same, the same thing. It's going back in to retire that debt.
See, the water lines are already run. They have to hire a contractor to tap it, right?
The water line's already in, right? The four subdivisions, Tanglewood, Granada, Cedar Creek, Coronada. All those additions needed water run to their locations. The city designed it, bid it out, provided construction administration. 100% of the cost of all the water lines, the valves, the fire hydrants, even the taps at the time to people within the district, all that cost was totaled up at the end of the project and then divided equally by 137 to come up with that.
And the city gets to make money on the water they sell to those residents.
Right.
So it doesn't cost the city anything.
And since those stakeholders paid 100% of that water line improvement, it was kind of viewed such that, well, okay, those lines now become a quasi kind of a private line. And now anybody that taps it outside that assessment district would have to pay this fee. Plus, and it was set up like a fee plus 15% in addition.
To be able to tap.
To be able to tap, right.
After initial installation, the city's done with it.
Right.
That doesn't sound right, but that's what it is.
Well, it was a water improvement district or something, is what it was called.
And no homeowners paid 100% of the cost to have it extended out to them. And at the time, they weren't even in the city limits. So part of the, part of the deal, they had to come into the city limits for us to do this.
And doesn't this apply only while that debt is still being paid?
Yes, it only applies, it goes off.
Until the year 2011 or something?
2011, yes.
Yes, yes.
So if we get this thing paid off sooner, then maybe we drop a payment or two or something. I mean, I'd love to see the $20,000, but I don't think it's fair. So, fair is fair.
Well, I think it's a, it's a good recommendation and a good catch, really, about what the intent was versus what the, what the actual document says. So I would make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collier. Call roll, please.
I have a question in terms of mechanics of this. And do we need to pass an ordinance right now as well or how's that going to work? Ordinance change? Okay, thank you.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
O'Neill?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Did we, now I'm thinking, did we need to include in the motion, wait a minute, staff's recommendation based on the fact that this is not a development?
As part of the interpretation?
As part of the interpretation.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Okay, write that down, Phyllis.
Okay. Motion made. Second, yeah, technical, okay. That was, that was what our discussion was. So basically, that needs to be included in the minutes so that it's fairly clear. Right. And he underlined it here, you know, and he talked about it, underlined it in our notes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Seventeen, consider an ordinance calling for a nonpartisan general election and general runoff election for the offices of mayor and commissioners of wards two, three, and four, establishing dates for filings and elections, establishing qualifications of candidates, and providing for said elections to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board.
Pretty straightforward.
Very straightforward.
Motion to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holt. Read the title, please.
Ordinance calling providing for the holding of nonpartisan general and general runoff elections in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma. The purpose of the amendment, electing candidates for the office of mayor and the offices of city commissioner of the second ward, commissioner of the third ward, the commissioner of the fourth ward. Establishing the filing period of qualification for such offices. Does the name and manner of electing various city offices named herein, providing for said elections to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board, providing for voting by absentee ballot, and the election process.
Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
O'Neill?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Wilson carries.
Motion carries, thank you.
What would happen if the motion failed?
Holding of general elections statewide primary election date, lead chief minister here. A recent reform of law, publication, ordinance calling nonpartisan general elections. Emergency, if I can play with this version of the ordinance, if it's coming back to, if we're forced to back to the nonpartisan.
A motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Neill. Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
O'Neill?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. New business?
None.
Administrative reports?
Now, this is going to be an ordinance change at the cemetery that we're looking at. And if you, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer some of them. I just wanted to throw this out to y'all before I set it in front of you to vote on. And you can go out to the cemetery and visit. Those guys are very passionate about what they're doing. They're actually the ones that...
That's actually a little disturbing.
I think you meant to say that they're a really good crew.
Yeah, they're an excellent crew. And no, they really, they brought this up and I thought it was a good change. And I'll have some pictures for y'all at the next commission meeting on this. But what we're looking at doing right now, we allow just flat, single flat markers at the head of every grave. And when you get a whole row of those, you have to go around to every one of them, weed eating, spray them. And then when you throw a base in the middle of all that, you got to go around it, too. And what we're proposing to do is also allow double flat markers that include flat disappearing bases in them. And it really does make it look a whole lot better. So that's just what I'm going to throw out to you.
Is this a common practice in other cemeteries?
This is a common practice, yeah. Rest Heaven's got them. There's a lot of cemeteries that have them.
How about taking the base where it goes down?
Yes, a disappearing base.
My parents are like that.
Because a lot, all of our newer sections only allow flat markers with the disappearing bases to make it easier to mow.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. We'll be ready.
All right.
Last Saturday, we had our first youth aviation adventure out at the Gordon Cooper Technology Center.
Awesome.
And we had 99 young people out there that were aged 12 to 18. They were given training in nine areas of aviation by 14 local aviation experts. Of the 99 attendees, 43 were Boy Scouts that earned their aviation merit badges that day. Pretty good deal. It went very smoothly considering it was our first one. We're looking forward to an even bigger event next year. Mr. Beck, who put all this together, is really to be commended for this. He did a great job, I think. Really put our airport on the map, at least for a day. And also, I understand that a youth aviation adventure fund has been set up for the city or through the city.
And gives a contributions fund.
People can donate for next year's event for the food and supplies and it's tax deductible. After the event, 63 of the kids came down to the airport and received their first ever airplane rides. And that was sponsored by the Experimental Aircraft Association and the Young Eagles Program. You should have been there. The parking lot was overflowing. It was hopping.
Did you get pictures from it?
noon. And the veterans group is working on getting all the food, and they're going to have some live music, and it's going to be a big deal. And I just want to let everyone know about that, and we'll have some advertisements in the paper about it as well.
We need, we need some contributions for fuel, right? Have you worked that out?
Mr. Boardman said that they were taking care of all that.
Really?
Yes.
Wow. That's pretty awesome. A lot of J-8.
Yeah.
That's about it.
So it's kind of a bummer that it's on Sunday morning, 10 to 12. We tried to get them here Saturday night, tried to get them to skip Clinton and come on over here to Shawnee and spend the night Saturday, and head on to Arkansas, but especially when they weren't getting a response, they said, they sent me an email, said, hey, you know, the mayor of Clinton, and was like, don't go to Clinton, come on over here. But they...
You're talking about the city of Clinton.
Yes, the city of Clinton, yeah.
That is a good clarification, I thought.
Yeah. Anyway, they, but they're going to be here, and it's going to be a neat deal, and we'll have an opportunity to get some free press for not only the airport and what's going on out there, but also for our new veterans' memorial park. So, good, good time to kick all that off, so appreciate what you've done, Rick. Do we have a fly-in also coming up?
That's going to be in June, June 14.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
I have a couple of things. The, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the particular Subcommittee, Mike Foreman and his group for the presentation at the CPN last Thursday, I thought that went real well, and thank the Department Heads again for participating in that. Next, we're going to change the layout in this room a little bit. We had talked about this a few times before, essentially, we'll have two tables instead of one long table. They will be running perpendicular to the arc, one will sit about here, the other one will sit about that same distance. The podium will move dead center. There'll be a camera above where the mayor sits, shooting at the podium. So it's really a much more traditional layout for our city council chambers, and the presentations there will be directly to you. The, and then the presenters, of course, will have their backs to the audience. When we were talking at the staff meeting, at the management team meeting, they were saying maybe having a mirror or something on there to look behind, but we're not going to do that. So anyway, that's what we're going to do, and that will be in the next month or so, probably, something like that. Again, just clean it up a little bit.
Well, we also have some, get some wireless mics.
Uh, yeah, I believe that, that's true.
So we can distribute out.
They're supposed to be, they're going to be, or move the, the mixer back here, everything will be re-lined.
Okay, good. Okay, excellent.
Yeah, and the number of seats at this table will remain the same.
Okay.
Just so it's work, okay? And I'm trying to think of something to talk about for 20 seconds a minute.
Oh, is there a vet?
Um, I don't, I guess I can...
I, I could drag it out a little bit. How much does it work, how much does it work to you?
We could take the benches off and bring cops in.
Let's see how much money we got wagered here, we might split the proceeds here.
I've got to be honest about this, that's all we have.
Okay.
Two in a row.
James, we, you forgot to mention that we had a little meeting with Jason Skilron and his wife, Melissa, about skate park design layout, and it was very interesting, because he took one of the designs they had and said, no, the kids aren't going to like this, they like this better, because more kids could use it, you know, this is going to be two, not two kids or whatever, three kids, but like six kids could use this one element. So we looked at the dollar figures and manipulated some things around, and ended up with a, that slab was 110 by 60. 60 by 110, which we're going to try to run like north and south.
That's right.
Right, kind of over in the tree kind of area. And so it looks like a pretty neat deal, and so we, I guess you're going to talk to American Ramp and...
I'll re-contact that.
Okay. Set the feedels, okay. So hopefully, we'll have something popping on that pretty soon, because we budgeted a little more money to put in that, so we can make that happen, that'll be, that's, that's the only easy button that I think we have.
We've got enough money to cover that change.
We, yeah, we think so, because, well, again, we manipulated the dollars to make sure that we're still okay with what we had agreed to do, so. Also, we are surveying...
We're just trying to not use the word manipulate when we're talking about dollars, but I'm just teasing you a little bit.
Okay.
We rearrange, rearrange the funding.
We, okay, rearrange the funding, how that sounds, whatever. Also, the, the Sports Complex property is being surveyed, field work's going to be done this week, and appraisals are already in the works, so hopefully, within the next two weeks or so, we'll have, at least by the, probably, hopefully, the first meeting in June, we'll be having, I don't know if we have to have an executive session to discuss the purchase of that property or not. We don't have to, do we? Okay. Should be a pretty straight-up deal, and we, then we'll go to the next phases of getting with the stakeholders and management and maintenance of that facility, because we sure can't do it. I mean, we can't hardly keep up with the thousand acres of parks we have now, much less another manicured ball field area, whether that may be. So, anyway, so we'll look forward to more of that discussion in the pool, of course, moves right along. So we got some great things going on.
We'll be open.
Okay. Do we have, when's the fire hydrant stuff? That's coming up probably, is that in June? We're waiting for summertime to flow, yeah?
I don't really think it will, but sometime this summer.
Sometime this summer?
The county committee or before.
Okay, all right, some, this summer sometime then, okay. No more administrative reports?
Okay.
Okay, commissioners' comments? I know Pam's got a little bragging, and I got a little bragging, too.
Linda and I can both brag.
You're bragging?
Both of our girls participated in the Kualanis Track Meet, and it was a great turnout. The Kualanis did a great job. Great job. Beautiful day, I will say, Hannah did get a first-place ribbon and two seconds, and I don't know how Ally did.
Second, two-thirds, and a fourth.
So, we were proud of our little girls, but it was great, and if anyone didn't go, next year, you really should go out and see those kids, they have so much fun, and I know we all did as kids around here, but it's still just as much fun when you're old and your own kids are out there, or not. It was just great.
Speak for yourself.
Well, do your bragging.
It's always, always a state of mind, right?
It is.
Well, my youngest daughter, Kirsten, was a medalist in the conference golf tournament, very proud of her, her second year in eighth grade. Even though she hits from the wrong side of the ball, she's a left-hander, she still managed to move it on down the, down the path. And just last night, my daughter, Britten, who's a 19-year-old at OU, is, was crowned the Miss Oklahoma National Teenager, and will be competing at the National Pageant in Nashville at the end of July, so.
Congratulations.
Very proud for her and all the scholarship money she keeps earning, so, good thing, it's a good thing to be beautiful and smart, so I hope she does something with that in the future. Yeah, yeah, oh, Niva. Niva, you have something to say? Other brags, comments? Youth aviation, what a wonderful deal, I tell you, man, those kids were so excited, that was great.
One update, Linda Prater and I continue to work on the, the Wes Watkins contract, and have made a lot of progress in the last, maybe, maybe two weeks, spent a lot of hours, and she's done a tremendous amount of work, too. We were hoping to have it finished to bring this meeting, it's probably going to be next meeting. We swapped drafts at Hardisty last week, and so we're reviewing that, and we'll be doing it again probably this week, getting it all cleaned up.
Excellent.
To bring to you to, to start hashing through some things.
Excellent. Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn? Come on now.
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Holt, second.
On 9:30.
Yeah, who's going to win? Second by Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor Stevens, is that right? Call roll, please.
Holt. Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Shran.
Aye.
O'Neil.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Peterson.
Motion carries, okay. Open the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, May 5, 2008. We have a quorum, consider approval of consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Holt, second by Commissioner Peterson. Call roll, please.
Holt. Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.